Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 13th meeting of the Oak Park Board of Education. We call this meeting to order at 7:02. This is the regular meeting of the Oak Park Board of Education. Ms. Gier, can you please call the roll?
Carpern, here. Alvin.
Here.
Good friend, here. Hoda.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Lunkins. Smith.
Yeah. And we're going to recite the district mission, vision, and beliefs. And for that, we can start with trustee, why don't we start with trustee Alvin and go?
To create the district mission, to create an inclusive learning community that provides best academic and social experience by educating the whole child, one child at a time.
Thank you. Trustee Carpern, would you like to read the vision?
I'll pass on to Ms. Goodfriend, because I'm still trying to log on.
Okay. Trustee Goodfriend, the vision, please.
I'll pass because of the lights, it's pretty hard on my eyes. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Klein?
Our vision is to create visionary leaders and compassionate citizens engaged in the global community.
Trustee Smith, can you do the first of our belief statements, please?
Yes.
Why don't you do the first two?
Yes.
We've got, one of the board members has their microphone on their computer.
Number two, right?
Okay.
The first two, the first two belief statements. You look. Create and implement systems that provide a culturally competent, safe, supportive, and collaborative learning environment for all students and staff. And then the second one, personnel.
The, the belief statements, I believe you're doing our strategic goals. And in, in Board Book, we have our belief statements.
You can bypass me.
Okay. I'll do the belief statement.
Yes, thank you.
We will create safe physical, emotional, and cultural safety. We will build positive, productive, and supportive relationships with all members of the community, including students, parents, and local leaders and businesses. We will use equitable anti-racist instruction to instill a growth mindset and help all students reach their highest potential. We will prepare all students to be thoughtful, successful, and engaged members of the global community. We will work together to responsibly maximize our resources with transparency and accountability. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for reviewing with us our, our vision, mission, and belief statements so we stay focused on our task today. We move on to approval of the agenda and order of business. Are there any board members that wish to, that have questions or changes to the agenda? Trustee Carpern and then trustee Goodfriend.
I just had a question in regards to the personnel action. If I, if I have a question, I have to move that to another part of the agenda, correct?
So in our next agenda, if the agenda is approved, then in our next agenda item, when we get to the consent agenda, you can remove an item from the consent agenda. Trustee Goodfriend, did you have a question about?
That was the question I was going to ask. I'm having a very difficult time with the hearing, so with the masks and all, if you'd be kind enough to speak up, that would really help my ear.
All right. Thank you. I'll do my best. Any other board members have questions or changes to the agenda? Then I'll ask for unanimous consent to approve the agenda. Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. We move to the consent agenda. Any board, there are four items on the consent agenda today. One is approval of the minutes for our August 23rd meeting. There's approval of personnel actions, approval of the June 2021 financial statements, and approval of the July 2021 financial statements. Do any board members wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Trustee Carpern?
Yes, I would like to remove 3B, 3C, and 3D.
Okay. So those items will become 6A, 6B, and 6C with the, and then the remaining action items will move down accordingly. That leaves on the consent agenda, the approval of minutes. Does any other board member want to remove that from the consent agenda? Okay. Then I will ask for unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda. Seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. We move on to, um, reports. We start with our superintendent, Dr. Hachette.
Good evening, board trustees and community. Thank you all for being here this evening. I'm going to start out talking about a wonderful partnership that we've established with the city of Oak Park and the Parks and Rec, as well as library in particular. So we received about a $5,000 esports grant that will allow us to purchase equipment here at the high school for students to participate in an after-school esports activity. Additionally, the library received a $6,500 cultural grant for a high school dance class that will be provided here weekly as well with a dance instructor, instructor for just an after-school program. Both of those events will take place in the New Knights Cafe in addition to a teen council that will be facilitated by David Pitts, who oversees our Parks and Rec department. Additionally, we had a meeting this week with, or at the end of last week, with the Instructional Leadership Academy through the University of Washington. As you know, our teaching and learning instructional framework was created by the University of Washington, the 5D framework. And we have been working with them and our administrators over the course of last year, focusing on improving our instructional practices as leaders to better support our staff and ensure an equitable environment for all of our students. We have a number of transfers, transportation positions available in the district. As you know, there is a national bus driver shortage. And if we have any families that are interested in, or, or any community members that are interested in, and qualified to drive a bus, we would encourage them to please contact us at our central office and speak to Andrea Thacker, who is our transportation director. We also have physicians available in our custodial department. And interested parties are eligible for a $1,500 signing, signing bonus through the company, the third-party contractor that we work with, D M Burr. And we are excited about the progress that we've made with Lessinger, the Lessinger Early Childhood Center. We are on track with a project schedule that will be providing to the board every two weeks. Bids are going out for an HVAC renovation project on September 15th. There's a new doorway, concrete stoop worked on, masonry work is about 50% complete. And carpenters are working hard on metal studs and framing the walls, fire alarms, plumbing. All of those things are well underway at Lessinger, and we're really excited for that progress. And we had our third football home game here this Friday. We were really appreciative of the support that we received from our community with everyone being masked up and supporting all of our COVID-19 protocols. So we really appreciate the community coming together and adhering to our protocols. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions about the superintendent's report? Trustee Goodfriend?
The question that I have, when we were at Lessinger School, just about three weeks ago, close to that, I would imagine, it didn't look like we were on track for anything, because all I saw was things in a constructive way. No walls, no commodes, no wiring that I could see that could be functioning. So I don't understand. I thought we would be ready for a session much closer to opening than we are now. I, I just don't know what's happening over there.
An update was shared at the end of last year, as well as this year, that as a result of COVID-19 and some of the high bids that we received, that we were extending the opening timeline, and the opening would not happen until the spring. As a result, we would not officially have students in seats until the fall. As a result of the increase in costs and the bids being extended, as well as the, the contractors and the shortage involved in them being able to start the work as quickly as a result of them being inundated with other projects. So that information was shared by Steve Barla spring, as well as this fall. So Plant Moran Cresso will be providing me and the board with updates every two weeks. So you will hear more about the progress as we go. But yes, that information was shared, that it was pushed back.
Okay. So I'm, I'm not trying to be critical, but I don't want to put anybody in hopes of it being open sooner than expected, because for the simple reason of what I saw was really rough. It was really rough. And, and I would hope that rather than getting these extended messages and email that are, companies come to the board and discuss this publicly. This is very important to this community, as well as to this board. So, and that, that gives us the board an opportunity, or Mrs. Goodfriend an opportunity, as well as other board members, to be able to ask questions of those that are intensely involved in the actuality of it. So I would appreciate that.
Oh, no problem. Had I known that before this evening, I would have certainly invited them to come. So I will reach out to them and have them join us for an update for our next board meeting, as long as they're available.
Well, we, their availability, I guess they'll have to put it around our schedule, which is, uh, our schedule is the second and fourth Mondays of the month. And I would hope that at least once a month, they come to the board in person and be able to answer questions, as well as to give us updates of where we're at.
Does, does the board wish to, is there a motion to add an agenda once a month to have construction updates?
Well, that's to be expected, Mr. Hoida.
That, that's to be determined by the board. So if there's a motion, then we can add that to the agenda, and we can vote on it and see what the board.
Please do.
Okay. So we will add a motion. It will be, it'll be 6G for adding a monthly agendized presentation by the construction companies about progress. Are there any other questions about the superintendent's report? Trustee Klein?
I didn't understand. I couldn't hear you about the motion that you placed. What was the motion?
If I understand it correctly, trustee Goodfriend, is the motion that we agendize a monthly update to the board from the construction companies?
Second.
Well, the, the motion will be on our action item agenda later in the meeting.
Oh, wait. So the motion's not right now, you're, you're going to ask the motion later?
Trustee Goodfriend made a statement about what she would like to see happen. And so rather than having individual board members dictate our agenda, we, the way we can do that is to add an agenda, is to add a, is to consider it as a board.
Okay. Understand.
Yes. Go ahead. Do that.
Are there, do any other board members have questions about the superintendent's report? Trustee Klein?
Did you have something first? I don't know a whole lot about esports. Can you tell me what that is?
It's an opportunity for students who are engaged in online video gaming competitions to compete with each other and potentially other schools.
So is this an opportunity for the children to do that here in a safe and school environment with proper equipment and other?
Correct.
Good influences while they're at it?
Say that last part one more time. I'm sorry.
It's an opportunity to have them here where we can provide a welcoming and.
Yes. Welcoming supervised environment that's structured. And hopefully, through this practice, we'll be able to develop a team that will eventually be able to compete with other schools in the area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Then we will move to our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Baptiste.
Good evening, Oak Park community. Good evening, audience, board members. So tonight, my general update is centered on virtual enrollment. And then the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, the school-wide goals. And so I'm just going to, share my screen. This was presented at the board on August the 23rd. Too loud?
No, no. Loud, louder.
Louder? Can you hear me now? All right.
Great.
So we've been working diligently in the Office of Teaching and Learning and also with supports from our building leaders with, and, and admin assistants at every single school building with virtual enrollment. And so our school of choice deadline, we know is, was September 3rd. And we're rightsizing at this time. And so determining students who are virtual, but like, would like to be in person, we've left that option open for people, for families to let us know. And then that opens up seats for those that are on the virtual waitlist. And so that had to come to a close by September 10th, so that we could start rightsizing our classes, take students off of waitlist, and determine availability. And so we've been working ideally to determine section availability even down to today, with the hope of rightsizing or notifying all of our families by this Friday and rightsizing in time for count day. So I just wanted to share that timeline again publicly, that that's what we've been working on. And the result of that is we've been able to close out our waiting lists in a variety of grades in elementary, middle, and high school. And now what we're doing is within the waitlist that we do have, we want those students to be taken off. And so we're working in collaboration with building leaders and also with Oak Park Virtual to see what some next steps can be put in place. So that's the update for virtual enrollment. I wanted to make sure to highlight that. And then, um, a brief presentation on the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. In order to receive state funding for this upcoming school year, we do have to present to the public school-wide goals with more information to be shared in February at the midpoint, where we're able to share the actual, students haven't taken any tests as of yet. And so we're measuring, they're going to be taking tests this week, all the way up until October, benchmark assessments. They'll then take another benchmark assessment by February, and this is what we would be reporting on, the midpoint data. And then finally, in June, what happened, you know, between the fall, the winter, and the spring. And we had to determine school-wide goals, which we were able to use goals from pre, the previous year, because the MDE recognizes that the legislator wants this in by tomorrow, basically. Well, September 15th is the deadline. So we are allowed to use the goals from years prior, last year in particular. And I thought it was apropos for this to happen. And all schools were to offer this presentation to their staff as well and be posted onto the transparency link. So I'm going to present here, and there'll be more data to share at a February board meeting, and then again in June. So just centering on our guiding principles, as we know, health, safety, research-based decisions, a commitment to social emotional support, high-quality instruction, and providing learning tools for success. Those were our guiding tools for our Extended COVID-19 Plan last year, and they carry on to this year as well. So as I stated, in order to receive state aid for 2021 to 2022, we're required not later than February 2022 and June 2022 to do the following. Ensure that information is presented to the board and that it's disaggregated by grade level, by student demographic, and by mode of instruction received, by which students or pupils, to which information it actually applies to. So in our case, at this time, even if we have virtual sections, those students, for the most part, are receiving instruction in synchronous. They're, they have live instruction that's taking place. Therefore, we, our mode of instruction is live instruction. So just making sure that when we break that down or report it to the state, we share the percentage of students that were remote, percentage of students that are receiving live instruction. The second requirement is that our goals are to be described in a subdivision that specifies which educational goals are to be achieved, not by, by not later than the middle of the school year, and then again, by the last day of school in 2022. Third requirement is that we have to ensure that not later than September 15th, each school building of each school operated by the district, in conjunction with teachers, or administrators of the school establishes educational goals expected to be achieved for the 2021, 2022 school year. And the guidance received by the MDE is a presentation that's offered to all staff, also making sure that this is made publicly available. So our families are also aware on our transparency link. And the fourth requirement I just shared, which is to share on the transparency link. So we, of course, had an opening statement just about how much the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted us as a district and as a community. And overall, where the majority of our students are coming from, where throughout Southeastern Michigan are they coming from, and where's this impact? And finally, the, I don't want to go too fast, but due to the wide range of experiences that students have had during remote learning in the 2019, 2020 school year, and then last year, we do anticipate that students will come to school in the fall of 2021 with an unusual and high variable range of competencies. We're highlighting that and elevating that to the MDE as well. And so we know that teachers are going to be administering benchmark assessments to students, and the MDE asks us to classify every single school on what they'll be using. It's not by grade level, it's by school. But for the purpose of this presentation, we wanted to make sure to highlight, okay, specifically, in the elementary schools, we're also going to be using DIBELS assessments. And whereas in years prior, we used DIBELS from K3, last year, we also incorporated K5. And the DIBELS assessment helps us to determine individualized reading improvement plans. We're going to continue with assessing students in grades K5 using this particular assessment. And the reason why we're going to be doing this is twofold. One, read by grade three, the law previously applied to third grade and only third grade. But in this year, it applies to third and fourth grade students, because the MDE, or the legislator, I should say, recognized that many students in the, who were previously third grade, who are now in the fourth grade, did not take the M step. And so they want to see, now that the students are in the fourth grade, do they also qualify for being retained under the read-by-grade-three law? So we're held accountable for that for two years in a row statewide. And for that reason, we decided to continue to have the DIBELS assessment for the upper elementary grades as a support for reading instruction. So in the first 30 days of instruction, all, all DIBELS testing will be administered, K5. Families and legal guardians will be notified of their child's class schedule for testing. Homeroom teachers are supporting and designated students into small groups for assessment purposes. And all data is going to be entered onto a district and state-approved platform for literacy assessments, no later than a pending MDE deadline. MDE-approved deadline. And then again, the individualized reading improvement plans will be completed between October 1st and October 4th, and distributed to families during the fall parent-teacher conferences, which is also the week of October 4th. So as a means of continuous improvement in teaching and learning, all teachers will receive professional development in and implement accelerated learning strategies for this year. So we started that during our August 23rd, 24th, 25th PD with staff, where we've begun the process of implementing accet, accelerated learning strategies and using formative assessment processes. And that will still continue during our October 8th, November 2nd, and March 11th professional development. Those are our goals for this year for our district professional development. And it ties into supporting these school-wide goals to be shared with the MDE. And so just a reminder that formative assessments will be used to identify gaps in student learning, make data-informed decisions about student progress at the classroom level, assess student understanding and mastery of skills, and support teachers with modifying instruction. And so the meat and potatoes are actual goals specific to iReady. So as you know, we've just adopted iReady. This year, we transitioned from NWEA to iReady for the purpose of not only using a benchmark assessment, but having intervention strategies available to us with the data that this platform provides. And so beginning fall 2021, Oak Park Schools will be utilizing iReady assessments in both English, language arts, and math. And to, and to maintain consistency for both students and teachers, iReady assessments in reading and math will be administered to all students three times. Once in the first nine weeks of the school year, once in the first nine weeks of winter 2022, and then again, prior to the last day of school for the 2021, 2022 school year. And again, formative assessments will provide information to inform our progress towards our goals over the course of the year. And progress reports will be made available on our website in February 2022 and June 2022. Our goal for ELA, last year, the goal was specific to K8. This year, the state requires that we extend the goals to K12. And so, goal one, all students K12 will improve performance in reading in ELA from fall to spring as measured by iReady. And all teachers will use the formative assessment to process, the formative assessment process to support adjustment to teaching and learning, and to support meaningful student progress towards mastery of ELA academic standards. And results from our benchmark assessments, local reading, summative assessments, and formative assessments will be continuously discussed and analyzed by staff. And so there are structures that are put in place for staff to engage in what we call professional learning communities, where this work will continue. And the goal for math is very similar, and we keep the language loose. We want the students to improve by one grade level, by achieving standards, showcasing proficiency. And we don't have the scores in front of us just yet, so this is, we're able to just share with the MDE. We want students to make improvement. And again, the same thing, that all teachers will use the formative assessment process. And then again, that the results from the math benchmark assessment, local summative assessments, and formative assessments will continuously be discussed and analyzed by staff. And so regarding curriculum and instruction, we will ensure that all virtual educators are available to provide live video instruction at or, and/or provide student supports that are synchronously available to students during the entirety of the instructional day. Focus on grade-level standards, aligned instruction, provide daily student social-emotional supports, ensure clear communication with students and families, and submit and monitor student daily attendance. So these are some of the things that the MDE will also be monitoring, which is part of why we have our social-emotional learning screeners in place to support, with making sure that although it's not a math goal or an ELA goal, that we are making sure to incorporate that in our curriculum and instruction plan. And then again, for assessment and grading, our grading policy was amended in the fall of 2020 to provide accommodations for utilizing the formative assessment feedback cycle. The changes were made to reflect a grade that comprises a 50% formative and 50% summative. And it's critical to the instructional process so that students can receive timely feedback that helps them to know what they need in order to improve. And it also gives teachers important information so that they know how to adjust the teaching and learning process to best meet students' needs. And so we're going to be upholding the amended policies in this upcoming 2021, 2022 school year. So that's 50% formative, 50% summative. We're carrying on with that in this year. And that is pretty much the goals, but also the updates for what we're doing to support students. And we'll be sharing this on the transparency link. And also a reminder, all of our building leaders have also presented this to their staff, so that we, you know, comply with the MDE's requirement. And we will be sure to not only share it online, but if there's any parent meetings, it can be shared, it can be printed and stored in the schools if anybody has a request. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any board members?
Thank you. Do any board members have questions for Ms. Baptiste? Trustee Corporal.
I mean, the question that I have, I guess, is really actually a statement. I know that we came out of a difficult year with COVID and all and the virtual learning. But the plan that you just mentioned, it sounds as if, you know, it's going to be really, I guess, the way I'm looking is, is strong because, you know, of us coming out of the pandemic and the scores, you know, not being great, but when you say that the benchmark is for next year, correct?
This year.
Oh, it was this year? Okay, so is this year, what, what date? I thought you mentioned next year, I'm sorry.
So we have to provide data reports, February two thousand and twenty two and June two thousand and twenty two, that's the
Oh, for this year for those dates, understood, okay. That was it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Trustee, since I'm going to call in you in a moment, but before we do that, I see that Trustee Lundkins has joined us remotely, and she is joining us remotely due to a medical condition. For the record, Trustee Lundkins, can you please unmute yourself and state the city and state where you're located?
Oak Park, one oh five four two North Oak Drive, Oak Park, Michigan.
Thank you, Trustee Lundkins. I'm sorry, go ahead, Trustee Smith.
Yes. The question can, um, the question can actually be answered by either Ms. Baptiste or Dr. Hitchcock. This is in reference to some of the updates that we're receiving now. And, you know, during our normal schools, during our normal school year, when things are normal, we had our parent teachers organizations and P T A so forth, and they receive these vital updates. Are we, now that we're coming back to in school, in-person learning, will we be engaging those type of activities again, initiating those within parents to brief them? Just as such, I think it's some vital information that needs to be updated. I mean, we can, we do a good job of communicating via, you know, electronic medium and so forth. However, you know, that, that, that person-to-person engagement, whether it's virtual or, you know, I know in-person may be seen, that may be a little bit too much right now, but at least to get those P T A and P T O meetings kind of moving. Any plans towards that?
The answer to that is yes, these are the things that I, I live for, this type of interaction, where right from the parents, we know what is it that's needed, what is it that's going well, what's the information that is critical that you can get so that you know the dates to support your child, but also upcoming events? And they are going to be, yes, supported at the district level, but really within each school building. And perhaps what that configuration can look like is the elementaries work very closely together. So there may be some dates that are earlier on in the day for some families where all three elementary principals are together, and later on in the evening for families, you know, to accommodate, not every family has the type of schedule. And then the same thing, not every family has a schedule that works within eight A M to three P M. And then the same thing for the secondary level, a collaboration between the middle school and the high school where there are some meetings that can happen in the earlier part of the day, and then later on at the end of the day, other meetings that can happen. I would strongly encourage if there are families that are interested in participating and, you know, being family representatives, or however that has worked out in the past, to definitely, this is the way that we get family and community engagement and that support, and the, the beauty of this pandemic is that we can increase our numbers with Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, our next report is from our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Ms. Diglio.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a few updates because primarily my focus during this time is staffing and hiring. And as you know, a lot of the COVID protocols that are going on in the district. Human resources have been, has been working diligently with the building and district leaders to identify, hire, and onboard the best staff to elevate the Oak Park School District and to best serve our students and families of our learning community. While H R is working to hire adults, we work hand in hand with Dr. Hitchcock's office and the Office of Enrollment. It's been a little tricky this year as we had quite a few resignations close to the start of the school year, but we also wanted to maintain our hiring in terms of student numbers. So we budgeted this year for thirty nine hundred students. We currently, the enrollment office brought in over six hundred new students, but we haven't been able to maintain our student body. So today, our count was three thousand eighty. So that resulted in us pulling down a number of openings that we had put up. But I'm really pleased to say that this week's Personnel Action Report is quite lengthy as we want to give a warm welcome to several new staff to the Oak Park School District. Despite over fifty education jobs listed on the critical shortage list, our team has been able to hire some of the most difficult jobs to hire, even if there wasn't a critical shortage list, and that is a band teacher, an elementary music teacher, and our newest cabinet member, CFO Christine Jones. I will say the most difficult and the primary postings we have left up have to do with special education. And we have a new director, Jackie Smith, who's working closely with me to identify great candidates for our special education students. But under that umbrella, we're looking for an A S D teacher, a Mai Kai teacher, two social workers, two speech pathologists, two school psychologists, and a resource room teacher. One thing that I think we're all really proud about at Oak Park is we have assembled teams at all the buildings. It's very, very rare to find a general ed and special ed social worker, a school psychologist, a speech pathologist at every school. Not to mention some of the other folks that have been hired in the past, instructional coaches and so on. One thing that you'll hear me say all the time is it's important to bring the best people in front of kids to serve kids. But one big part of that is retaining, retaining good staff and making sure that the new folks that we are bringing in, we embrace and onboard them the best that we can. On a bright note, Ms. Smith was able, you've heard before, our difficulty of giving, getting special ed A S D teachers in the district. She was able to take care of a problem that's been ongoing on and off for the last three years, and we're really proud to, to mention that. But I do want to say that on tonight's Personnel Action Report are also a lot of O P E A teachers who have taken on new assignments so that we can close down sections where we may not have student numbers. And they have been reassigned some late in the summer, and I just want to thank our O P E A staff for working with their administrators and central office to make sure that we're being physically responsible in that area. I'll be honest, in my thirty-three years serving as an educator, I've never ever thought I'd see elementary teachers on the critical shortage list along with so many more. This is a national crisis that requires a systemic movement to improve conditions of the profession and how educators are regarded in our community, state, nation. And our children deserve better, and our teachers deserve to be supported as well. Or really, anyone in education, as Dr. Hitchcock mentioned, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, counselors, social workers, the list goes on and on. And I'm just want to go out to say that we want to work very hard to not only attract great people, but also keep them here in our district. The last thing I wanted to mention is that we continue to monitor and meet as it relates to our ever-changing COVID mandates. Dr. Hitchcock, Vanessa, Nurse Long, even Christine Jones today on her first day, tour the buildings to monitor and see how we are doing with our protocols, among other things. As you know, we've remained very committed to our health and safety of our staff and our students. I look out in the audience to see our O P A this evening, and I see everybody masked, and that is much appreciated. We will continue to mandate masks, social distancing, good hygiene, and the use of daily screen nurse. Today, or last week, Nurse Long and Dr. Hitchcock and I met to discuss the latest plan about mandating vaccinations for all employees. This is something that is, that may be going into place for organizations with over a hundred people, which would impact Oak Park, but there's lots of news coming out and a lot of reports coming out and a lot of information coming out. And I just wanted to let the board and the community know that we look at that daily and will keep everyone abreast as those changes come, and will continue to follow the guidance of Biolsa and the M D H H S. That's all I have for this evening. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions for Ms. Diglio? Trustee Corporal.
I do. I couldn't help but to notice that there was a multitude of resignations. And I just wanted to ask the question, is there any exit interviews?
Yep, we've talked about this in the past. We do have an exit interview that we've gone twofold. Anyone that resigns or leaves the district, even if you retire, you get a letter from the Office of Human Resources that confirms that resignation or retirement and a link to take an online exit survey. The other side of that is if anyone that wants to meet in person with myself or Ms. Chaney, they can do so, and we'll walk through and talk through that exit survey. We also ask, we've called people back, we've been emailing and communicating, and there's a wide variety of why people have resigned. But we do watch that closely, and I think that's a really good question.
So when you say there's a wide variety, so there, each person is leaving different reasons, or?
Yeah, there's been a wide variety. Some, some has been jobs closer to work. Some have left the state because a spouse has been transferred. Some have been given additional monies in districts. Primary a lot have gone back to Detroit because they're giving quite a huge bonus, signing bonus to come to the Detroit Public School District. Some are, have left the profession, as, as I mentioned many times, there's a national crisis going on in education, so many people, as it got closer to the start of the school year, have left the profession. So there's lots of personal reasons and other reasons that I think are directly related to education.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Diglio, I did have a couple of questions. You mentioned the enrollment numbers.
Sure.
So if my math is correct, the, we currently have an enrollment that is about just over eight hundred students lower than was budgeted.
Correct, and that's in-seat numbers. So we have enrollment numbers where people have enrolled in the district, but what we get held accountable for are in-seat in-person numbers.
So the in-seat numbers are about eight hundred students lower than what was projected?
That's correct.
And that is a revenue shortfall of over seven million dollars for this year?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, and so, as you mentioned, we have almost a thousand students who are enrolled but have not come to school yet. What are we doing currently to try and bring those students into the classroom so that we can get closer to our budgeted numbers?
So we have partnered with our administration and our teachers to come up with a very common script. We did very similar, we took very similar steps when we had to deploy all of our laptops. So we're making phone calls home to kids that are on lists, on class lists. So at the elementary, they have their class list, at secondary, they're picking an hour, first period or third period. And they're calling students that have, that are on the enrollment list but have not shown up in person. And the principals have created a script so that we can gather that information. Are you coming? Why aren't you coming? How can we help? What do you need? Several of those things so that we can get a much more accurate picture of why students that are enrolled in the district are not physically coming to school yet or showing up virtually in our virtual option. So we are, we are calling homes right now and watching these numbers very closely. Our principals have a system in place at the school level to make sure that we're counting physical heads in the classroom so that we have the most accurate numbers.
And you mentioned that we are facing competition in terms of staff from other districts under the, the collective bargaining agreement that was signed in January. What are some of the incentives for teachers to stay here in Oak Park compared to what they would be getting in Detroit or other, other similar districts?
I think, you know, some of the things that we can look at for sure are smaller class sizes, especially in the elementary buildings right now. One of the tricky things to staffing is we're trying to stay very committed to the COVID protocols, and we have three feet distancing in the classroom, so we're trying to be very mindful of that. We do have one of the highest salary schedules in the Oakland County area at this point. While we might be on a wage re-opener, we still have the salary schedule that remains in place. We have added longevity to the contract for our, our staff members that have been in the district. Prior to the new contract, it topped out at step twelve and a P H D, so we look at lanes and steps. But we have added longevity to that contract. We also are still working on our Schedule B, which is athletics. Schedule A, which is athletics, B, which is inter-curricular activities like band, theater, and then our clubs, still working with the O P E on A on that. But we have TA'd Conta area leaders and grade area leaders in the classroom or in the classroom level district-wide so that we're aligning our assessment and our grading, and those are paid positions off of Schedule B. So we're trying to incentivize student or teacher voice, but also out of Ms. Baptiste's office, encourage us to work together systemically as a school district.
And has there been any, any consideration of hazard pay or bonuses for this year? I know there are some other districts that are offering such things. Have we looked at that as a possibility?
One of the things we're hearing in Detroit is they're offering something as high as fifteen thousand, and that is not something we can do. There are other districts we have looked at, and one of the things that we would like to do is some, some districts are also giving signing bonuses, but we, we decided as an administration, it's hard to give signing bonuses to someone brand new to attract them and not be able to give our own staff bonuses. So we have been in discussions about providing the para, the O P E S P A, staff a bonus, signing bonus, and then our current staff bonuses. So five hundred signing bonus, or seven fifty if you're special ed, five hundred if you are currently a paraprofessional in the district. And then the same for teachers, two thousand five hundred. And both of these bonuses would be at the halfway mark of the school year to encourage people to stay with Oak Park. But twenty five hundred for all teachers who are currently with us, and thirty five hundred for special ed new staff members that sign on with us. So not only are we trying to encourage people and bring people on, I have had to turn people away who want higher salaries on the pay scale than it would be wise for us to give, but I think the hiring bonus is, is a strategy that we can bring people in. But I don't like to ignore the people that are here and make sure that we are providing them with, with some appreciation as well. That would have to come out of our E S R funds. There's section nineteen of the E S R funds that allows us to use the E S R funds for salaries to stabilize our work environment. So we are using that to stabilize where it's hard to find positions. As I mentioned, all of the special ed positions, we do have one science job posted with only one applicant. Of the positions that I just mentioned, of all the special ed position, there's less than 10 viable applicants, that's applicants, out of all those positions. So we have to be strategic, but we're also very committed. If it's not the right person, then we're not hiring them.
All right, thank you. Trustee Smith?
Yes, Ms. Deglio.
Yeah.
If we can go back to the student enrollment.
Sure.
Of those thousands enrolled that have not attended yet?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm, I'm familiarizing myself with process.
Sure.
Are we sure that these children, that these students have not been swayed and gone over to another district? And if I'm correct, the process would include us to have the capability of releasing?
Right.
Isn't that, isn't that how the process goes? We have, we would have to release them to another district if we requested or?
The, I'll let Dr. Hitchcock speak to that because she's taken it pretty hard on the chin by refusing to do that.
Right.
Because we believe in our district.
Right.
I'll let her speak to that if that's okay, Mr. Smith?
Okay, thank you.
So I, I think there are two different things happening. The first that you're talking about is a question around where are those 1,000 students? And that's what we are trying to determine right now. We believe that it could be arranged from students who've chosen to go to a different school district, all the way through, you know, families just being extremely fearful about returning to school and not having the stamina to support their child with online learning. It, it could run the gamut. There are also several students that are caught in sort of an immunization cog where we are unable to accept students into the district if they have not received all of their immunizations. So we provide immunizations, childhood immunizations, this is not COVID, but typical childhood immunizations through our school-based health center and through the Oakland County Health Department. Obviously, families can also get those through their pediatricians. So we believe that there could be some students who have not come as a result of that. So I think there's a myriad of issues. I am very confident in our principals and teachers who would be reaching out to these families as well as our administrative assistants and taking notes as to why families aren't here. So right now, we cannot answer that.
Okay.
The, the release issue is only an issue for Oak Park residents. So if the student is an Oak Park resident and they are choosing to attend a school that either does not offer school of choice or the school of choice window has closed, they would come and ask the superintendent to sign a release. In those cases, there's maybe a handful, two to five at most, where we have denied their request for waiver to be signed, which essentially means that they would take their per pupil dollars with them. Other students, if they are not residents of the Oak Park School District and they were enrolled in school of choice, they could have determined they're going to attend their neighborhood school, they could have determined they're going to attend a charter school, they could have gone to a private school, they could be, you know, just about anywhere. But on Wednesday, we have asked our principals to have all of this information kind of sorted out and to provide us with a tally so we can determine, hey, there are this many students who really, the immunization issue continues to be a struggle for that family, how can we help support them? There are this many students who have families that are just extremely fearful of COVID-19 and do not want their students to return to school. Maybe we need to open some additional virtual sections and reach out to our teachers to determine if there's someone that can go virtual to take some additional students. There are another group of students who may have chosen to go to a different school district and we know that if we can confirm that, we can drop them from our MyStar roles. So I think, you know, there's other families who may say, oh, we were waiting to get uniforms and we say, oh, we don't have uniforms anymore. Come on to school. So it's hard to say what the issue is until we gather that information, but the principals are planning to have that information back to us, sort of tallied from each building with the overall number so we can determine next steps.
Thank you, Dr. Hitchcock. Yeah, my, my overall concern there was, you know, just counterproductive, you know, counterproductive bacteria is on our staff, so that's.
Right. The waivers really is about not allowing them to leave.
Right.
Instead of encouraging them to, to leave. And I, you know, I feel really passionate about that as well as many of the 27 other superintendents in Oakland County because it's very rare that families, or very rare that superintendents release students so they can take their per pupil dollars to another school district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Corprin?
Yes. Madam Superintendent, as Mr. Trustee Smith was speaking about the waivers, during the window that we did have open enrollment, did we receive any waivers?
We don't, we don't need to necessarily receive waivers because we're open school of choice. And so our school of choice period was, is, is open the full gamut of time that we can be open from March until the last week of the first week of school, the last day of the first week of school. So from March to September 3rd, our window was open. So no one is really requesting for us to sign a release because they're welcome to enroll in the school district.
So then after, which would be now, well, September 3rd through, well, no, because school, school of choice is closed, so I guess that cuts away.
Right. So there could be an extenuating circumstance, like, for example, if there was a, a family that moved and their child is in their senior year, we would typically grant that waiver so that child could graduate from the school that they had been attending. Or if there's some, just unique circumstance, a death, an illness, or some serious situation like that, typically superintendents discuss those things on a case-by-case basis. But other than that, we would, we would not sign.
So like a hardship, basically?
Some type of serious hardship. The hardship couldn't necessarily be, I just didn't realize the house I bought was not in Oak Park. It would have to be something that was significant.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move now to public participation. And a reminder to the public that this is an opportunity for you to provide input to the board. This is one-way communication, so the board will not respond to anything said during public participation. If you have questions that you'd like answered, please make sure you go to the appropriate building administrator or to the superintendent so you can get answers to those questions. And Trustee Lundkins, can you please read the public participation statement?
Members of the, of the audience are invited to participate in board meetings prior to the business portion of the meetings, following conclusion of reports, and prior to the adjournment of each meeting. You will be asked by the board president and give, and asked, give your name and address before making your comments. Please present a concise statements of your concerns. The board president may choose to limit your presentation to three minutes. All three minutes are now, in order that all who wish to speak may have the opportunity to do so. Thanks for your cooperation. We welcome your input and appreciate your presence at our meetings. If anyone, any person with a disability needs special accommodations at our board meetings, Board of Education meetings, please contact the superintendent's office at 248-336-7705 within seven days of the date of the meeting. Thank you.
So anyone present here in person that would like to address the board can line up at the podium. Anyone on Zoom that would like to address the board can raise their hand. And again, each person will be given three minutes to speak. And I'll start with Mrs. Summers.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Dawn Summers. I live at 11232 Andersonville Road, Davisburg, Michigan, 48350. This is my 11th year in the district at Einstein Elementary. I was hired in during the Dr. Colbert pay cut, pay freeze era. At that time, the district was in the red and the teachers helped to bring the district back into the green. It was a tough few years where I relied on my third job to help me pay bills. As the years have gone on, I have been able to continue teaching my passion, but I've had to maintain running my small business on the weekends and at night. With my teaching salary alone, I'm unable to make ends meet being a sole provider for my family. I put in nine-hour days in the classroom and some additional time at home to make sure my students are successful. When I'm not in the classroom, I'm working on stuff for my kiddos in class, I'm working on my small business so I can afford to put gas in my tank or food on my table. I truly expected to receive my step each year. It was disheartening to be put on a step freeze. All other prices seem to be rising around me, but I'm stuck with the same amount of money in my check. I chose to stay in Oak Park this year to start my 11th year as, as it is my teaching home here in Oak Park. It was tough seeing job openings in other districts around me like Clarkston, Brandon, and Holly, so much closer to home, that are giving steps and paying more money. I personally know eight teachers who left Oak Park this year for districts who are paying them more and they were really great, amazing teachers. I worry some are looking for employment elsewhere for the increase in pay. We can't afford to lose any more good teachers. I pray the board and Dr. Hitchcock can work together to ensure that we get our step this year and in future years. We, the teachers, deserve our step. We're working hard to ensure our children receive the best education possible. I look forward to the day we receive our step and I am no longer required to maintain a full-time business on the side to support my family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we'll go here in the audience. Ma'am, if you, did you want to make a statement, please?
Hello. I'm sorry, I might miss thing, well, I have missed things because like my youngest student, I'm hard of hearing and in auditorium, my hearing aids don't do anything justice. My name is Timmy Hood from 24601 Onida Boulevard, Oak Park, Michigan, 4237. And I have had the unfortunate incident of interacting with the school board and the superintendent this year in a negative manner. As I just recently discovered, maybe my problem was insignificant. I am a Royal Oak school, my school of choice for nine years. My student, my eighth grader, has attended Royal Oak from K through eighth grade. She's an eighth grader. I now have an intern kindergarten and I received misinformation years ago, or I jumbled in my mind, that with one student's enrollment, with open enrollment, I just thought I had to enroll the second student normally. I misunderstood and when I went to fix the problem, I was shut down by Oak Park Superintendent Miss Hitchcock and I was told that she is unwilling to release my student. So the hardship of a single parent who works full-time, going to two different districts when I've already enrolled my student in Royal Oak Schools, soccer team and other activities along with my other student as well as my stepchildren. And now I'm supposed to just take that one student and start her in Oak Park for one year. And I'm, I'm sorry to say, Oak Park's niche grade is a D. Royal Oaks is an A. And academics an A. The only grade that Oak Park had that was suitable for me was the B and it was in activities. My student is already starting at the disadvantage of not being able to hear in many places. And while I know you have a special ed department, again, as a former educator myself, I did taught Detroit Public Schools for 15 years and at Detroit Academy of Arts and Sciences for three. As the educator myself, I know the struggle the educators go through to educate children. And I wanted to go where I had a relationship with the principal because my student attended K through fifth grade at Oakland Elementary, which is where my second student will go. And I have a relationship with the superintendent's office as well as everyone because again, I've been a parent there for nine years. I am on the PTA. To split my time like that is unreasonable. And now I'm struggling to make sure my student has a place to go. A lot of the, I went to Shrine when I was younger and I went to enroll her there and they're, they're full. I tried to go to all the, the places that I know. Franklin Road Christian I'm familiar with, but now there are no buy, no longer in Southfield. I don't know how I'm going to get my kid back and forth to school if I have to go so far out when I already have arrangements with Royal Oak. And repeatedly have just been told I'm unwilling. She did not ask my circumstances. I told her it was a hardship for my family. I explained as much as I could. And again, just unwilling to release, unwilling to release, put it on Royal Oak, have them enroll her. That was, that was unfortunate for me. It's a hardship for me and I don't believe it's, it's, it's okay. I have a problem with a few other things that I've experienced with Oak Park School District. Again, I've been an Oak Park resident for 37 years. I did not attend Oak Park Schools. My mother had issues with it. I went to Ferndale and my sister went to Berkeley because Berkeley was a better fit for her. I have school of choice action. I tried to do this before September 3rd. Again, unwilling to release, unwilling to release. But again, I just didn't want to pick a new school to start. I have a relationship and I have a student now entering with a disability and I'm here after being up since four o'clock this morning because that's when I work and running from home to soccer, to school. Because it's what I do, I'm a mother. And now I'm fighting to get my kid enrolled in a different school because like, as I informed Dr. Hitchcock, she will not attend Oak Park School. It's just because it's not the best fit academically and she's already starting off with special need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Neely?
Hello. My name is Yolann Neely, 18280 Oak Drive, Detroit, Michigan, 4221. I'm a 22-year veteran in the, veteran teacher in the Oak Park District as well as a union representative at Oak Park Crepitoria Academy. I have always had faith in this district to the extent that my youngest daughter attended OPA from 2017 to 2019. If you want to chat with me about all the ups and downs that I have experienced during my time here, I am more than open to do that with each of you. By the way, this is a part of an email that I sent to all seven board members. I'm sorry, I meant to preface that. I sent this email about two weeks ago. However, my concern today is why are we, as teachers, not getting a pay step increase? I really need to hear this answer from you all, the board, because the answers we are getting from central administration are simply not cutting it. As the building representative, I can tell you that our teacher morale is low and we are mad. We are here for the students as we always have been, but our hearts are heavy and we are not looking forward to another COVID-filled school year and lack of respect from central administration. In addition to those thoughts that I sent in my email, these have come up in the last couple of weeks as well. I'd like to add that I'm saddened to hear yet another valued colleague had chosen to resign and go to another district who was willing to pay him the minimum of what he is worth. He's an African-American special education teacher who did not mind me referring to him tonight, as this was not his plan at the beginning of the year to leave Oak Park. But because of the pay freeze, he had to think of other things to be able to support his family properly. If you do not know, special education teachers, as you've heard previously from central admin, are very hard to come by, especially African-American males. They are few and far between. He has been invaluable to our building because he has been able to relate to and inspire our young males who were his students and not his students, in particular in a special way. Here's just one example of what I call the nuances that central administration refuses to try to understand as it relates to what really goes on in our buildings and how valuable all of our teachers are in so many ways. How many more talented and invaluable teachers are our students going to have to lose over the less than $2 million that is available that we have been denied? Central administration, you talk about retaining good staff and working hard to keep good staff. Pay us. Pay us.
Thank you, Dr. Neely. The next person in line here in the audience, please.
Good evening. My name is Ramel Miles. I reside at 24500 Seneca Street, Oak Park, Michigan. I am also a proud parent of the Oak Park Marching Legion, our Oak Park High School Band. Um, I'm a little bit disheartened because I was one of those parents that sat on the board to, to interview a new teacher. And let me go back, everyone says that, that we as the, the parents, the students agreed. We all did not agree. We agreed that the person We all did not agree. We agreed that the person that is up for getting approved was a very good teacher for our middle school, but not as the director of the Oak Park Marching Legion. A band who has been around for over 10 years, who has brought under the direction of Dr. Goodwin under seven years, over $20 million to scholarships that would have not been offered had he not been here or had this band program not existed. You are bringing in a person who only has three years at best as a music teacher. When the letter was sent out to our parents, you said that this person had been a music director over a school that doesn't even have a band program. But you want us to have blind faith that our band program is going to continue at the stamina and at the style that has been? We have no faith in our leaders who took this to the HR. We have no faith in our administrators who decided that this person was going to be our choice. And if you decide to put this person in as our band director, we will have no faith in you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weiss.
Thank you. I am here, as many of you know, I represent the Oak Park Youth Assistance Board of Directors. I'm the board chair. So I'm here tonight just to give you a very short update and to make a request. One of the first things we're doing this school year is we are putting in cares closets. We're starting with Pepper Elementary this Friday. I'm very much looking forward to that. We have collected a lot of donations from the community who've been wonderfully generous. We have hygiene items. We have clothes. We have food. We have all kinds of things that kids, parents, families may need. So that's one way we are hoping to support the schools this year. We also are hoping to put one in at the high school. I know there had been one there. So I'm just waiting to hear back from the person in charge and we'll get over there as well. Whatever we can do with Oak Park Youth Assistance to help our kids, our families in Oak Park, we are here for you. If there is something going on that you would like to talk with us about, you know, I'm always available. Some of you know me more than others, but I'm always a phone call away, email away. I'm here for you. I do have a big request. Unfortunately, through situations, we have lost all of our representation on our board of directors from the Oak Park School District. And as you are one of our three sponsors, the sponsors are you, the school board, City of Oak Park, and the Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division. We need to have you as representatives. We lost Shayna Murphy, of course, as she got her position at the, as a principal. We lost two others due to them either being on leave or not being employed with the district. So we are asking you to please recommend two or three people from the district. It can be, it could be a teacher, it could be a social worker, it could be an administrator. We're hoping it's someone that has, has their finger on the pulse of the district so that I can go to them and say, what's going on in the schools? What do you guys need? What do the parents need? What do the families need? And we need to be able to have someone that can answer that for us. So we are looking forward to doing a lot, to partnering with you, to supporting the kids. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Person in line here in the audience.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pastor, Pastor Neighbor. And I'm also the president of the Oak Park Saints Little League Football and Chair here in this community. And I'm just here to give great gratitude to Dr. Hitchcock and the board for allowing our children to play on the high school field on 9/4 of September. We have been around since 2016 and we've been unsuccessful in, in being able to play on the field, but it has been a blessing to our children for them to be able to participate in the field, that a lot of them live in this, in this community and many of them play high school football here. And some of them never got a chance to play as a Little League, but it puts us in a place where other suburban Little League teams get to play in their local high school area. So I'm grateful today. I think our children have dealt with a lot of disappointment over the last year or so. But I think this, something that may not be important to others, but to children, that's a big deal. And so I just want to express my gratitude and I would do my part with this community to make sure that everything stays according to compliance. And I want to extend myself to whatever I can do to help in the district as far as mentoring children and helping them because they need our help and they need volunteers and I'm here to volunteer that help outside of football. Thank you for this time and everybody have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Mr. Adomision.
Good evening. Michael Adomision, 35535 Richland Street, Livonia, 48150. Good evening, members of the board and community. It's good to see all of you. I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but I was on kid duty tonight as my wife had a late appointment. But I'm here with you now. It's been a minute since I last had a chance to talk to you guys in this manner. I want to start my address with something positive. Personally, I can say that it's been great to be back in the building. It's great to see fellow staff members again in the flesh. Moreover, I'm really grateful to be able to see kids in person and more kids than we saw last spring. It was great to see the kids that were there that took advantage of being in person in the learning labs that we had set up, but it's truly great to see the kids in person. I know I've said it to you guys before and I've said it to a lot of other people that virtual teaching, while it was needed, as we made our way through the depths of COVID over the last 16 months, is an incredibly poor substitute for in-person teaching. And it's just nice to be back with our students. I thought on what I wanted to address tonight. I hope that the statements by my fellow teachers and staff members help convey some collective sense of frustration. These past 16 months have been without a doubt the most difficult time in my 11-year teaching career. I think this is a sentiment shared by most, if not all, of my fellow teachers. I had wanted to address finances completely as other teachers are with my remarks. But something was said to me earlier today that I've really been struggling with. Teachers in this district work hard. We do not, we not only do the jobs of teachers that, those that find themselves in more financially stable or socio-economically stable do, but we often find ourselves as counselors and mentors and from time to time even as a parental figure, a mother or father to many of our truly at-risk students. I know I've discussed this with some of, some of the board members and some of the community members personally, and I know that you see where I'm coming from there. We have an extremely strong core of teachers who have chosen to stay with this district through thick and thin because we want to be here. We greatly appreciate the time that we spend with our students, the ability to reach them and to provide a safe space for them and to do everything within our locus of control to combat some of the immense pitfalls that they face in simply getting to the building on a daily basis. Unfortunately, it was communicated to me earlier that, well, teachers just weren't doing enough and for some reason, the student count was affected by that. Students weren't showing up because teachers in the district weren't doing enough to reach them. I find that particularly galling and misplaced. Teachers in this district in large part have chosen to stay so we can do just that, to work with some of our most at-risk children and do whatever we can to reach them. As you've probably heard and will hear, there's consternation and anxiety surrounding finances and our wage re-op. I know that personally because I'm the lead negotiator for the OPEA and I deal with it every single day I'm in the building. And every single day that I'm not in the building. They're well-founded, especially given the uncertainty over the last 16 months and the crisis that we find ourselves in with COVID. I think a lot of the anxiety stems from the fact that we went into this process, at least on one side from the board, that there would be no step increases. If you look at the projected budget for this year, it openly assumed no step increases before we even started bargaining. I have to temper that, however, with the knowledge that there's a sizable amount of ESAR money, as Carol had pointed out, that can be spent directly for staff retention and wages. A great way to stabilize staffing and keep teachers, to show them that you value their work, at least for this year, would be to compensate us with a step. I think these teachers all realize that we're in a quandary. I'm wrapping up. Mr. Hoda.
That are expired. I'm going to ask the next person in the audience to go ahead.
All right. I'd just like to, my name is Byron Lewis. I resided 23500 Middle Belt Road in Farmington Hills and I'm a teacher here at the high school. I'd like to echo Mr. Adomision's thoughts. What others might think we do as teachers does not actually add up to what we do as teachers. We don't provide reports that actually 100% detail the responsibilities and tasks that we perform to care for our children, such as you do. And so I do feel like there's a, there's a miscommunication in terms of what, what is acknowledged that we do and thus what we should earn. When we're underpaid, we feel undervalued. You mentioned bonuses. That seems, I don't know, it's an interesting idea. But I think we all need more stability right now. And my assumption coming into this district was that I would care for the students and my coworkers and that the district would care for us. And that's why I'm frustrated. I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Ms. Western.
My name is Mary Beth Western, 23046 Ithaca, Oak Park, Michigan. I would like to yield a minute of my time to Michael Adomision.
I'm sorry, Ms. Western, we don't have, there's no mechanism to yield time in public comment. Public comment for each person to make their own public comment. Everyone has.
And I will go ahead and continue. As a teacher at Oak Park High School, I have stayed here with, to help my students and they have been a part of my life. For these last four years, I keep my students for multiple years and these students are part of my family. And if these were my own real children, I would be speaking today as a parent and letting you know that many of my colleagues are leaving. Colleagues that were very, very good teachers that my students need, the students who are coming up need. The students, the teachers around me have supported my students in ways that I cannot even imagine. We have a beautiful family going on at Oak Park High School. That family cannot stay together and cannot support and provide the kind of education that the children that I teach need. If we lose those valuable teachers because we are not paying them what they are worth and we are not honoring who they are. I had the great opportunity of working with the Oakland Youth Innovation Lab this summer and seeing what kids can do when people are paid the kind of wage that they need to pay, be paid. I've seen what kids across this county can do. And we can do those things, but we have to value the employees we have. We need to pay them an adequate wage. And we need to value the kids that we have. We can't just have teachers who are going to accept any old wage and come from wherever and don't have experience. We have valuable, educated people in our building and throughout this district that I hate to see us lose because our kids need those people. I understand that this is a difficult time, but it is a difficult time for everyone. And at 58 years old, I should not have to work three jobs with the kind of education that I have in order to keep my household running and then be told that I'm not valued. I've chosen to stay here even though I have had multiple offers. I teach students with autism spectrum disorder. I can go anytime that I please and probably make a very good wage. But I love the children that I have. They're part of my family and I'm part of their family.
Thank you, Ms. Western. Next person in the audience, please.
Hello. I am Chris Cooper. I'm an English teacher at the high school and I teach AP literature and college reading readiness for juniors. I live at 12960 Lincoln in Huntington Woods. So I've been an employee here in this district for two years and two weeks. What a two years and two weeks it has been. A complete roller coaster. One of the reasons that I decided, I really, I, let me just say this. I taught in Clarkston for 12 or 13 years. Left education for 20 years to raise children. Did some part-time coaching around the district, around the county. When it came time to get my own teaching job back, I knew I wanted to come to Oak Park primarily because I had seen through my coaching the quality of the staff at Oak Park High School. I knew that my colleagues would be a continual source of inspiration to me, that I would learn from them every day. I may be the person who learned the most today at Oak Park High School. I'm not sure. I had a coach in with me. We're trying something new. Every day is a learning experience for me and I'm grateful to be part of this staff. Personally, I did not expect to be in the position that I'm in in terms of my own sort of financial situation where now my second child is in college. We have now a small business. So what started as, hey, I think I'd like to teach again, that'd be great, is now, you know, I really do need that step and I really do need that extra income. And I'm sure I speak for many. But my personal story aside, I'm also here to advocate for my excellent colleagues who, many of whom have been here a long time and deserve the respect and deserve the, the payment for the excellence that I see every single day in the halls of Oak Park High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bondano.
Hi, good evening. I'm Owen Bondano. I live at 3379 Peter Street, Windsor, Ontario, Canada. I teach ninth grade English at Oak Park High School. And as many of those here know, I'm the 2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year. With my position, I've spoken to many teachers from all around the state. And as we know, we are not the only district in the state whose enrollment numbers look a little bit different from usual. The state counted tens of thousands of students last year that were labeled missing and those students are from all over the state. And yet I have yet to encounter another district in our state where teachers were not given their step this year. And when I share that we were denied our step in this district, these fellow teachers are shocked. I hear questions like, then what are they doing with the ESAR funds? Or wow, they must have no cushion left in their savings, which we know is simply not the case. For me personally, this year is also the beginning of the step down of the cash and lieu for healthcare. When this was announced last year, I thought it was pretty inequitable because the cash and lieu payments were meant to equalize the compensation of all employees. By stepping down cash and lieu, I am now compensated less than my coworkers who use district healthcare. But all that being said, the reality is that the step down in the cash and lieu combined with the denial of my step for this year means I'm actually making less this year than I was last year. The downstep in my pay combined with some of the other factors that we've heard discussed here tonight, it becomes difficult to feel the district's appreciation as was discussed at our back-to-school meeting. My largest class is currently 32 ninth graders in a room with 28 chairs and 28 computers in my laptop cart. And it's not nearly enough room in that room to keep that many teenage bodies three feet apart. Some of you may have heard that many classrooms in the high school experienced failures of the electrical system today. We were promised it would be fixed right away and it had not been fixed by the time I left the building at 5:00 PM. But this doesn't shock me as I've had an outstanding work order to just reset a blown fuse that is making the most important outlets in my room unusable since the beginning of the school year. These outlets already being dead combined with the ones in my room that died this morning, I had to string an extension cord across the middle of my room to use my smart board, which wouldn't have been such a big deal except I've had an outstanding work order since last March to have my whiteboards mounted in my room. So my smart board is my only whiteboard. The power outage also knocked out the new speaker system that goes with our microphones. So I'm nearly horsed tonight from shouting into a mask to be heard all day long without my microphone. All of this culminates in really one feeling. It's the third week of school and the 2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year is already exhausted, demoralized, and feeling pretty forgotten about. I stay in Oak Park because like Ms. Western said, these are my children. And it's, but it's, it's hard not to imagine the number of our talented, hardworking staff that must be searching for jobs elsewhere right now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next person in the audience.
Hello. I'm Sandra Huspanda Graham. I live at 28421 Eldorado Place, Lathrow Village, 48076. I love, I love what I do. Oh, yes. It's a little respect. But I think it's just horrific that I have to be told, not asked if I want to donate more salary, but told that I'm not getting what I have earned. I have worked so hard and I work every day for these babies because I love every single one of them. Had to come, had to be told things. I have been told things like, you know, it's, you can't buy a new TV. Well, I'm sorry. Guess what? My husband. Well, I'm sorry, guess what? My husband and I, who I'm not here at Oak Park, who I love to death, we're now in the same situation that Mr. Bondano said, taking, getting rid of the cash and lieu for the healthcare. And both of us not getting a step. And guess what? One of us needs some dental work done that has to be paid for before we can get it done. And it's not cheap, and that's after insurance what it covers, okay? So yes, we do use the Delta. And then guess what we found out today? We have no car, no second car. But then again, you know, no pay step increase, no, you know, come on, give me some respect so I can earn a living, that I can do my God-given passion. Because believe me, I am an awesome teacher. I give more and more of me to all of these kids always. I still have kids that we, we put up, we've taken into our homes, they've come to our weddings. We were at their children's things. We, we mourn with them, we grow with them. And, and we're just asked for a little respect. When you talk about class sizes, I have lap, have carts of twenty-eight laptops, I have a class of thirty-one. How do I do that? You talk about three feet of social distancing, I have my kids up against the walls as far back as I can go. And I can't put them back any further because the windows in my classroom do not, two of them do not open. One cannot be closed because it is no longer square. The ticket went in last year, they came and looked at it. The person in charge of it said it had to be outsourced because of the techno, the technological aptitude that needed to be to fix. It's still not fixed. You have the summer. Rain comes in my window sills now because when it rained today, for example, there was rain there. I had to go back there and make sure there was no rain on the floor to come out over the fan cord that I'm taking from the front of my room to the back, a fan that I purchased, by the way, to try to push the central air that's coming out so the kids can at least have some relief. Because yes, it's hot for them to sit in a classroom that's overcrowded. There is no three feet. You talk about longevity, well, yes, I got longevity because I've been here forever and a day. I know this. I joke about how you're going to wheel me out of here because I love where I work. I love the population for, I'm a BIPOC teacher. I, I am a person of color. You may not look at me and say it and see it, but I am. And how dare I want to even go anywhere else and not teach kids like me? I want to be that teacher that I never had, but I need respect.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Grimm. Ms.?
Hi, my name is Cara Hess. I live at one two two nine Gordon Court in Clausen, Michigan. I am a self-contained teacher at Einstein Elementary School. A lot of board, some board members and some people in the audience were wondering why. I know special ed teachers are a high commodity right now. One of the rooms in our building hasn't had a teacher for three years. That's one of our ASDD buildings. I was told on Friday that I would be adopting those five children, and I'm, I'm thrilled that I'm going to be getting to teach those, those five children. But that means I have to restart my whole entire classroom. So now I'm going to have eight kids, and I'm fired up about it. But that means I'm going to have one virtual kid and seven kids face to face. I have to restructure my entire classroom three weeks into our school year. I'm not going to be getting my step. That's hard to hear. Now, my husband is also a private school teacher. You know that they don't make very much money. I'm a public school teacher. My husband works two other jobs. This past year with the shutdown, he wasn't able to work those jobs. So this summer, like every summer, he usually works camps. He had to work summer school. I had to work summer school. Now, again, all these teachers are talking about working one, two, three additional jobs. And you're still going to deny us our steps? And then Owen mentions this, the cash and lieu, we're, we're losing that too? That, that was, that was a big thing for us, for my family. That cash and lieu payment was, was my car payment. That, that breaks my heart. So now, on top of that, my husband and I are going to have to restructure a lot of finances. I love what I do, and I'll tell you right now, I was offered three other jobs this summer, and I didn't take them. This is my fourth year in Oak Park. It hasn't been easy. And I've seen some teachers work harder than I've seen any other teachers work, and I've been teaching for twenty years. Oak Park teachers love these kids like they love their own. And we deserve to be respected, and we deserve to be paid because we earn it every day. I've never seen teachers work this hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person in the audience.
Good evening. I'm Bill Grimm, the other half of the Guzman Day Grimm. I have been teaching here at Oak Park High School for over twenty years. Present, I live at two eight four two one Eldorado Place in Lathrow Village, Michigan. So we're just like a hop, skip, and a jump from the school, so I'm always running up here. I teach engineering in my first hour, virtual chemistry my second hour, regular chemistry my third hour, honors chemistry my fourth hour, and robotics my sixth hour. One of the things I'm seeing is we are taking teachers who are able to do many, many things to help out our students to be successful in the future, and just sort of holding their future, their livelihood in ransom. We, we're asking more and more of the teachers, you want to talk about a change in teaching style, think about the last year, and what every single teacher in the Oak Park School District had to do in order to educate our students as best we could. We would have loved to be in person, but we couldn't. I think we need to give those teachers their, teachers as myself, we need to basically sign the contract, get it over with, get us our, our money. And that's one of the big things that we need to do because you're going to be losing more and more teachers. There are opportunities out there, maybe not even in education. But I mean, you drive around, starting wages eighteen dollars an hour, starting here, starting there. There's opportunities out there for the teachers, and we are going to lose some talented people because we are not, or you are not, taking care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer.
William Boyer, one five four five Selden, Detroit, Michigan. Today was the nineteenth year that I spent a day teaching about the events on nine eleven. I was in my classroom. I've been teaching for twenty-three years, and I was in my classroom when that awful day totally overtook the classroom and the school and the rest of the day and all our lives. And one of the many lessons that day taught me is the importance of teachers having to improvise and adapt to whatever situation comes our way. And there's never been any shortage of questions since then, when the social studies department has tried to teach and still sort out all that that day and beyond has meant to all of us. I teach civil rights and government. And yet, the past year has been most challenging for me and my family. As most of you have suffered reductions in pay while inflation has gone up roughly five percent. I'm just here to echo what my colleagues have said, and at least one administrator who said we need to retain good staff, improve conditions, and how educators are regarded. And I know most of our classes at the high school are full. Many of our classes are full. My room is designed for twenty students. I've been there for twenty-one, I don't know, twenty-three years. B two forty. Now I have about twenty-eight students per hour, and yet we adapt, we improvise. We try to do what we can even when we can't keep three feet apart, and two of our windows can't be opened. We still adapt and adjust because we're professional educators. But we are asking to be treated like professional educators. So to the chair and to the board, legally, you do not have to respond to our questions and to our concerns here that the teachers have expressed. But morally, I feel you have an obligation to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins.
Hello. Hi, my mom is an Oak Park resident. She moved to Oak Park when I was fourteen. I am now an Oak Park resident and parent. My mom decided not to send me to Oak Park schools and leave me in Southfield Schools. Me now being a parent, I was forced to put my eleven-year-old as a student at OPA. Before transferring her to OPA, I had some concerns of some rumors I had heard even from back when I was younger. I decided to send her to OPA after talking to Ms. Regina. I was told that my daughter would be able to get bus transportation from Ms. Regina as well as the Oak Park Board. Upon my daughter starting school, that was not the case. I was then told by the transportation company that because we live in a mile of the school, that she did not qualify for transportation. We live at two one one four one Coolidge Highway, which is a thirty-minute walk to OPA. Her walk into school by herself with no guard at eight mile in Coolidge, there is not a guard until you hit nine mile in Coolidge, is unacceptable. I feel like the times should change. We have changed technology over time, and transportation needs to change over time. We have Oak Park buses going to Inkster and other districts to pick up students, but not picking up their own students. I feel like this is a large part of why a lot of residents in Oak Park do not send their students to Oak Park schools because of the transportation issue and because of all of these rumors, the lack of the teachers, and all the things that the teachers are saying. A female, eleven-year-old female walking to school thirty minutes during the dark is unacceptable. There's too much trafficking, especially with young black females, for these students to be walking. If there is a situation where there's a bus shortage, maybe start a carpool lane, maybe get clusters of students together where they can walk in groups. Us just being in the location that we're in for just a few months that we've been here, we don't know anybody. So just her walking by herself, she doesn't have any friends in the Oak Park District. Her friends came from Detroit and LaValia where she just recently finished school at, for fifth grade. So her walking, she has no one to walk with. We don't know anyone in our complex. It's unacceptable.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins.
Hello, I'm Patricia Jenkins. I'm the special education teacher from Key Elementary School. And I must say that I was really excited to be back after being away for so long. I think I was away extra time because my husband actually passed in March. So I was out of school, so it was so exciting to come back and actually see my students in person, to be able to bring them into the classroom and work with them the way we had worked previously. However, as the short time has come and gone, I am kind of concerned about how our teachers, myself, are being treated. I hear that the administration speak about hiring practices. But, you know, the efforts to retain and hire new staff members, I just want you to know that it will, you will not attract new teachers or key teachers without treating them better and more professionally. Teachers at Oak Park, we go over and above to take care of our students, our families, and our community at large. We apply our duties daily that are not ours, but, you know, we, we tend to conquer them because we want our children to thrive. And we know if we don't take care of family, if we don't take care of transportation, if we don't take care of clothing, if we don't take care of food shortages, then our students will not thrive in the district. So we take on these duties because we love our children as we love our own at home. So we, we just tend to conquer all the duties that are not ours to conquer. We do it for our kids, we do it for administration. Like I said, we do it for our community. We support our parents, we support our grandparents, we support the community at large. And so to not receive our bonuses, to not receive a step, and to hear that new teachers coming in may receive a bonus, it's kind of a slap in the face for those of us who have been in the district and we're working our hardest to make everything work. I have students that I had years ago that come back and, and find me and tell me the accomplishments that they've made and tell me how I made a difference in their lives, and that's why I stay at Oak Park District. My husband was a teacher for Detroit Public Schools, and when he passed away, his principal, the superintendent, I had several people come to me and said, hey, when you're ready, come to DPS, we'll take care of you. But I made the decision to stay at Oak Park because I see my children as an extension of my family, and I feel that they need me, and that's why I'm still here. So I just ask to be respected as an educator, to be given the step that I deserve, that I've worked for, that I've earned, and not to be told, well, you, you came into this district to teach, you came into this profession to teach. Yes, I did, but I didn't expect to have to work two or three jobs in order to work my profession. We deserve to be respected as teachers. Other teachers in Oakland County, they've been given their steps. Why have we not been given our steps? The money is there. I ask that Oak Park in general, respect your teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Fuller.
Good evening. That's Ray Fuller, twenty-seven five hundred Franklin Row, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three four. So on a positive note, I am excited to be back. Like, I'm already in love with my babies. I know this year is going to be amazing. I have some amazing students. I don't know what OPA did last year, but thank you. I teach ninth grade. And if you know me, you know I'm an exemplary educator. I go hard for my, my team. I go hard for my students. And I, I have no complaints about my duties or any of that. But I'm also terrified for myself and my kids, and it's not the fault of our building leaders. We just flat out don't have the capacity to really be back in person. And I return because I trusted Oak Park. I trusted they will hold true to the COVID protocols that they said that was going to be in place, and that's not happening. It's happening in my classroom, but it can't happen in the hallway. It's body to body. It's not happening in the lunchroom. It's body to body. There's no seats available. It's not happening in classrooms that could barely hold twenty kids on a good day without social distancing. It's not happening. And I experience anxiety every single day, every day. I'm scared for myself. I'm scared for my students. And then I'm told that if I get sick, that I have to use my PTO days in an environment in which the COVID protocols are not even followed, because they can't be. We don't have the space. We don't have the capacity. We don't have the things that are necessary for this to happen. And everybody's just acting like this is not a problem. It's a serious problem. And I'm wiping stuff down. I'm cleaning. I got my babies cleaning. We're doing everything that we can do. So as a teacher, as an exemplary teacher, that's literally getting job offers every week without even applying, it's really, really dehumanizing. We are on the front lines. We are dealing with this every single day. Every day, every hour of the day. So it's pretty audacious to not pay me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Veronica Compton.
Hi, my name is Veronica Compton Dupree. I live at two zero four six one Prairie Street in Detroit, Michigan, and I'm currently a sophomore attending Oak Park High School. The reason why I'm talk, the reason why I'm saying this right now is because today at the high school, I experienced that no one was following, none of the students were following proper COVID nineteen protocols because the hallways are always packed, packed, like they're very packed during passing time. And it's very frustrating because as someone who has a severe medical condition, because I suffer from asthma, so if I get COVID, it's going to be very bad for me, even if I'm fully vaccinated, it's still going to take a toll on me. So I'm just wondering what's gonna, like, is it going to take for somebody with severe medical conditions or severe conditions and stuff to get a case for our social distance guidelines? And also, the areas in the school weren't clean either because when I went to attend lunch earlier today, our floors wasn't clean. It was food all over the floor. There, it was water all over the floor, and when I entered my table at lunch, it wasn't, And when I entered my table at lunch, it wasn't, it wasn't clean. Like, it was still food on the table. So is it gonna take for somebody to get sick? Or is it gonna take after this? Well, I hope y'all have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
Okay, hi, my name is Janice Rose. I live at three five two eight O'Gary Street in Farmington Hills. And this is my eleventh year of teaching in Oak Park, my sixth year at Key Elementary, and twenty-three years in education overall. And I wanted to say that I do love my students and I love my Oak Park family. This is my home, but I also have an actual home that I take care of. And I was very disheartened to come back to work this year after being, you know, out all last year with the COVID and the virtual. I was excited to come back, but then coming back to in-person learning and learning that we were not going to have our step increase in pay. COVID has caused a lot of hardship in many households, and many of us have lost family members, jobs, homes. Another way that COVID has caused severe hardship is by causing the cost of basic necessities to rise. Gas right now is over four dollars per gallon. Home energy costs, at least mine, have doubled. Groceries have skyrocketed, and I just had to pay over fifteen hundred dollars in car fixture expenses. And I still need a timing belt, which I pray in every day as I'm driving that it just don't break because, you know, I don't know what I'll do. Today, on my way home, I stopped at the grocery store with the intention of purchasing some food just to stay our household until my next payday. And the bill came up to thirty-five dollars. And I went to pay, but I was unable to pay because I didn't realize that I didn't have the funds in my account. Because like I said, I just paid fifteen hundred dollars for my car. So embarrassed and frustrated, I put everything back. And I was able to purchase a twenty-four pack of water because I had three dollars of cash in my pocket. So it's just upsetting to know that if I had had the additional funds for my step increase, I would have probably been able to complete that purchase. While we received our prorated pay increase mid-year for the 2021 school year, we still never received our full pay because it was supposed to start last, well, we intended for it to start last August. So we are definitely not the highest-paid district in Oakland County or even up on that scale. I do have colleague, colleague friends who work in other districts who consistently have earned more money than I do, and they continue to receive their step wages annually without having to beg for them. And I just wanted to say that we deserve the same respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erica Compton?
Hi, how are you? I am Erica Compton. My address is two zero four six one Prairie Street, Detroit, Michigan, four eight two two one. I am a accounting specialist for Lockwood Management, and I am also the mother of Veronica Compton Dupree. I first want to start off and say that I'm also a banned parent. And I actually co-sign and back everything that Remael, Ms. Miles, said previous that we are not very happy with the choice that was made on, and how it was made, on who was chosen for the new position, and we don't have faith in you. And also too, another thing I would like to discuss this evening is some things that Veronica told me about yesterday that actually is, has me just wondering what's really going on. I'm confused because when Dr. Colbert left, there was a surplus of fourteen million dollars. And then as the stimulus packages were passed, there was supposed to be stimulus money given to the schools to make them COVID-ready so it can be socially distanced for the safety of the children. But yet she comes home and she tells me that there's no temperature checks at the door, that you're only using the Clear to Go app, which honestly, people can really lie on that. So I'm confused, like that, there's, like, it's too easy to get through with that. Then also, she was letting me know that there's no bag checks, like, and then there were things brought up about security because at this present time, I was told it's only like four security guards at the high school, and one of them literally just sits in the office and just watches on the camera. Like, I came from Highland Park, so I already know. A high school like Oak Park needs way more than four security guards. And from what I'm hearing, the four are four women. Like, that makes no sense. Then on top of that, I'm also hearing that there isn't adequate ventilation in the school. And there's also something going on with the faucets in like the bathrooms, and there's things going on with faucets in the chemistry lab. And that's not good because what happened in Flint really is a red flag when it comes to plumbing altogether. And today, when I picked her up after the storm, she also came home and told me that there, I guess it was water in places. So to me, it sounds like there may be roof, roofing problems. So again, I'm going to refer back to the fourteen million dollars and the extra money and the bond money. Like, I'm confused. And on top of the fact that it sounds like you're not even paying your teachers. So now I'm confused, like, literally, are somebody sitting over there with a below-ground pool? Like, I mean, you gotta let us know something. I mean, pay, pay the teachers. Get, get the school safe for these kids because this is unacceptable at this point. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Ms., Mr. Briggs?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Javier Briggs. I am a current sophomore at Oak Park High School. My address is two zero two eight five Washington Street, Roseville, Michigan. And before I begin with what I want to approach, I'd like to ask for your guys' full attention or all the members of the Board of Education, like, they have your full attention because I feel as if all what the parents and the residents of Oak Park has been saying to you guys, I feel as if you guys haven't been paying attention. Clearly, I'm just asking for you guys' full attention before I go on with what I say. I basically want to touch upon safety in Oak Park. Like, me as a student and me as an older brother to my younger siblings who also attend Oak Park schools, I have a younger freshman brother who just is a freshman now, and I have a younger brother who attends Key Elementary, and I feel as if it's not safe for the three of us. Not based upon COVID, but just the school in general. I feel as if it's not safe and sanitary for me and my brothers to stay. Because like, how can we be safe if nobody's now on social distance? People's not being respectful towards you and people's not like, how can I explain it? Like, people not just like, being safe, period. It's like with what the Compton family touched upon, safety, no temperature checks, no backpack checks, none of that, which I'm pretty sure you guys heard about the incident that happened last week at the high school, and there was no consequences after that. So it was like, me as an older brother, it's like, I'm going to a school as an older brother, my younger siblings inside the district, how am I going to know if my younger siblings are safe and stuff? And based upon the incident that took place last week and you guys told the administration at the high school to take away our hall passes, like, most of us students need hall passes because it's like, we must, like, we need to get out of classroom because like, we are mentally stressed as students and teachers as well. I get a teacher's stress every single day within this pandemic. Everybody's going through something with this pandemic, either a family loss or anything. And it's like, how would you guys take away the teachers' and students' freedom based upon your guys' decisions? And it's like, what even, what's even the cause of taking away hall passes or taking away the teachers' salaries? She's not being paid properly. Students are not being treated properly. These co-protocols not taking place. It's like basically how Oak Park was before the pandemic even began. So it was like, what good is it going to do us? And with what the Compton family touched upon, is this going to change or what? Because as parents mentioned earlier, teachers are on the verge of leaving Oak Park, not only because of the salaries, but because of based on how you guys are treating us as students and teachers. So it's like, who's going to be the first step up to the plate to give us the respect that we all deserve and the safety that we all need as residents, teachers, and students, or wherever we are that represents Oak Park? That's all I have to ask. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person in the audience, please.
Sure. I'm Brian Artsay. I live at one one five one five Maple Creek Court in Washington Township. I stepped up just today. I've heard a lot of great things from all the people that I work with for many, many years, twenty-three years. Some of the things, you know, are on my list and some aren't. I'd like to offer some clarity for the board. I started here in ninety-nine, got hired, actually started teaching in a classroom of thirteen young men that had been kicked out of all their classes. That was my first year of teaching, making thirty thousand dollars. Yeah, we do have a chart for our pay that sometimes goes to fifteen steps, eighteen steps, twelve steps, eleven steps, ten steps. Thinking of nine eleven, nine eleven, I was on step ten. It's two thousand twenty-one, on step ten, twenty-three years. I got the prorated raise this past year when we settled the contract, which was half a year of a raise, about five hundred bucks. Inflation since two thousand nine, twenty point nine percent. My father's CPA at Scholstat. He figured it out. Since two thousand nine, I've given the district approximately, well, I have it written down, it's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars of unrealized pay. Please pay us. Please pay us. Understand, there are steps that make us look great. I'd love to make eighty-seven, eighty-nine. Every time we sign a contract, you put me back on ten. Five hundred bucks doesn't pay for my kid that turned twenty that I raised through Oak Park. She lives a less privileged life now than I was a brand-new parent making twenty-nine thousand dollars. It's a shame, and I hope someone hears it. Not placing blame anywhere. I have eight hundred kids down. Great. Not my problem. It's not my problem anymore. When we lost the thousand kids the first time, we gave eighteen million dollars. The teachers, the staff, the district. And I understand what the new administrators have walked into. COVID, losing kids. Again, not my problem. You got COVID monies, make us whole. Let's get through the year. Let's try to bring these kids back and sit down next year and figure out a real pay scale that keeps all of these people or the people too scared to come say something. So I hope you respect me as an old-time teacher here, and I hope you understand, we want to do everything you want. Be compensated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel?
All right. Hello, my name is Makai Daniels. I live at one eight nine four five Gilker Street, Detroit, Michigan, four eight two three five. Today, I want to cover a few things. I've been in the district for almost eleven years. I have actually, I observe a lot. I see what our teachers actually have to stress and go through. Dr. Scott, please pay attention right quick. Can you please look up? Okay, thank you. So I seen what our teachers have to go through as teachers in this district. And I feel like as a student, our teachers really should get paid because they are going through a lot. This is a pandemic. They have their own problems at home. That's one. Two, our schools is not safe at all, at all. We are so packed in the hallways. You would think someone's about to get ready to fight. That's how many kids be crowded inside one hallway. It's too many kids. And then also in some of them classrooms, the HVAC system that was so clogged, fixed, or replaced, or brand-new, whatever you guys want to say it was, it ain't even working in some of the classrooms. Some of them classrooms, for example, today, one of my classrooms was at like eighty degrees today. It, how? How? Imagine tomorrow. It's supposed to be like ninety-something. It might be like a hundred something. And last but not least, our school don't have no security guards to manage like our whole school. It's only a few of them there. They cannot all sit in there and take care of that. And I feel like it's time for a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gollum?
Hi, everybody. Jeremy Gollum, two one one LeSane, Pontiac, Michigan, four eight two four one. It's tough to follow one of my, one of my students there, and that was my classroom. That was eighty-one degrees. And it wasn't the first time. I basically have told myself this year that I just am going to have the vision to, to love and be there for my students, even though I feel a lack of support. That's the best thing that I can do, and I, and I feel like in some ways, that's all I've got. I've been at Oak Park for six years. This is my seventh, and I have a lot to be grateful for. I've grown a ton, and I will always be grateful for Oak Park. It's obviously, without even needing to say, it's been a difficult year for so many people. In a lot of ways, I feel like I've started a new job because I had, I was told that I had to clear out my classroom, take everything out, take the posters down because the walls are being painted and to make room for social distancing. My walls weren't painted, and I just had to just set up my classroom all over again. The heat's not, it's very hot in the classroom and the technology doesn't work. I can't use my board appropriately. The sound doesn't work properly. And I don't feel like, I'm sad to say, I don't feel like I'm giving the students the best that I can because things aren't working the way that they should. I wonder if we just take on sometimes too much, more than we can really do in education, and we forget that we're working with people, people that have had traumatic things happen to them. And sometimes it feels like we're focused on the wrong things. So my fear is that it feels like the expectations are being raised for maybe everybody. And I'd like to give everybody the benefit of the doubt that everybody's doing the best that they can do. Everything I say is just based on how I feel. And I'm not one to come to this, and I'm not one to, I would only be here if I thought it was really important. And I hope you guys see that there's a lot of hurting hearts, and it breaks my heart to see students, parents, staff come here and kind of spill their heart. And I just hope that you hear the pain. And I hope that we remember that we're working with human beings and that this is more than a business, and it shouldn't be operated as if it's just black and white. There needs to be exceptions made. And my fear is that there will be lack of empathy because we're all too busy just going through the grind and trying to meet up the expectations. I hope we don't forget that we're working with people, and I hope you guys reconsider the pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person in the audience, please.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Ormond, two one seven two two Greenview Road, Southfield, Michigan. I don't have prepared statements. I'm kind of speaking off the cuff, but I do want to, I don't have prepared statements. I'm speaking off the cuff. But I do want to reiterate some of the points that my colleagues have brought up. I am a career changer. I didn't go into education. I have a background in science and a background in college education administration. Choosing to be a teacher is because it's my life's calling and because it's what I'm passionate about. But when you tell me that I'm not capable of being paid, yet districts around me are paying their teachers plenty of extra money, I question why I'm still here. It's not an issue for me to go back to my career prior to becoming an educator and making a lot more money than what I'm currently making now. The reason I'm here is for my students. But you make it more difficult every day to keep that as my reason why and my purpose. So I'm asking you to please consider my life, those of my colleagues, and let us remaining walking in our purpose for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bragdon?
Yes, hi, Chris Bragdon, two two nine zero eight Martyr Road, St. Clair Shores, Michigan. I'm a sixth-grade social studies teacher at OPA. I'm also the content area lead for the social studies department, and I'm one of our OPEA building reps for OPA, and I'm the head of our behavior team. This doesn't include the countless hours I've spent cleaning the school, replacing signs, and creating things for this building so that our students have a building they can come to and be proud of. My point is, I give a lot to this district. Much of it is unpaid. And all I simply ask for is what was promised to me in our contract, my staff. I'll leave you with this quote, "Doing the right thing is never the wrong thing." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
Hello, Board of Education Administration and citizens and teachers of Oak Park. My name is Chelsea Barnes, two seven one six six Pierce Street, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero seven six. I've been watching the I've been watching the proceedings tonight, and I'm frankly hurt. I know the passion that the teachers throughout the years have given to our students. I'm not going to go through the resume, but I have a student that graduated in two thousand five, two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen. The seeds that were planted by the teachers, and teachers are talked about family. I look at a lot of the teachers here as family because they helped me with my children to succeed. I know a little bit something about how the school works and everything, but let me just say this. This conversation about giving teachers what is due shouldn't even be a conversation. I just hope that you will do the right thing and get Oak Park back to where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ainsworth.
Hi, my name is Brooke Ainsworth, and I reside at twenty-four-three Golf Field Drive Apartment one-eleven in Troy, Michigan. I teach third grade at a school. I moved to this area in twenty-fifteen, towards the end of the pay freeze area in Oak Park, and I've taught here ever since. I love working with my students, and I love the population that I serve. Since I'm not from here and I didn't know anyone, when I moved to this area, I've met and built relationships in our, in our building, Key Elementary. And my fellow teachers have become my friends and family here as well as my students. I have been grateful to being able to come back into the classroom because Oak Park has become my home, and throughout the pandemic, I've missed coming to work each day. I'm a single mom of two kids, and therefore I'm also the sole provider for my family. And I truly struggle with paying bills, expenses, and making ends meet from check to check. During the pandemic, I've struggled with finances, but I've also struggled with my mental health. As the pressures for teachers have increased, and being a single mom trying to teach and my, my own children learn from home, it's been a lot. Since coming back this school year, I felt even more pressure and stress. Our workloads and responsibilities have increased, yet our step, our A-step has not been honored. This year, we are doing jobs beyond our title. Each day, we are required to get our students their breakfast so that they can be nourished in our classroom before learning. I've also been volunteering on my lunch duty to help recess and lunch run smoothly because we just don't have the staff. My classroom is also part of an entire hallway that was somehow skipped on the AC window units that were installed around the district a couple of years ago. And at the beginning of the year, I put in a ticket for my portable AC to be installed. However, I actually had to figure out how to install it myself. It actually is also stacked on top of two, the tubing can fit the window, which does seem very safe. As a teacher, I should not have to install my own AC so that my students and I can learn in a comfortable and somewhat temperature-controlled environment. I'm at the point where I'm starting to think about dusting off my resume and looking for other opportunities where I can get the pay that I deserve, which is a really sad feeling for me because I've always kind of felt like Oak Park was my forever teaching home. Regardless of all these shortcomings, I'm at a point, I do love what I do. I love my fellow teachers. I love my students with all my heart. But as teachers, we deserve better, and we deserve our step. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Hi, I'm Shalana Stewart. I have been with Oak Park since two thousand six. I currently work at OPPA, teach sixth grade, ELA. I'm two-zero-one-nine-five Harbor, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-seven-six. I don't have anything prepared, and I wasn't actually going to talk. However, I have seen, I'm very proud of a former student, Makai, speaking on today. And it reminds me of the reason why I'm still here, because I already went through a pay freeze five years straight. At that particular time, as others mentioned, I had to work a second job, some days working seven days a week, coming home crying, trying to figure out why I had a degree and still had to do that. But I understood at that time because all the districts were suffering. But at this particular point, I'm talking to multiple people in similar demographics, and they're not having the issues that we're having. For the very first time in fifteen years, I'm coming to work, just not able to give my all because I'm so frustrated. Like others, I'm in a building where somehow my classroom was skipped with air. I've had wonderful union people who have fought for me years, and I finally got something put in, but it's still eighty degrees. I asked to get my electricity fixed so I could plug in a fan. That's not happening. And it's just becoming very frustrating, and I'm seeing today someone left, a person who was an excellent teacher, as been previously mentioned, because they're leaving for pay. We choose to stay, and we need to be compensated for it. A lot of us are here because we love where we work. We could go other places. Plenty of us could go other places, but we stay and we get nothing for it. I stay because I see students, like I've seen two of mine talk today, actually, that I had in middle school, watching their progress. Remember meeting one of them in elementary school, throwing things around classrooms, misbehaving, and now watching that person give a speech impassioned. Watching those children grow up, watching students that I've now seen that are adults that come back. Actually worked with a student that I taught my first year in sixth grade. So those are the reasons that I stay in Oak Park. But I am tired and frustrated of worrying about, why can't I get my step? Why have I been here fifteen years and I'm still not at the top because I spent five years stuck at one point? And the only reason we moved up a little bit last year is because we had union members who fought for us because the administration didn't want to give us the money that we earned. So at this point, pay us. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your comments and your passionate dedication and statements. We move now to our action items. And our first action item is approval of the recommended personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the recommended personnel actions? I'll make the motion.
Six, support.
So moved by Trustee Klein, supported by Trustee Smith. Do any board members have questions on the motion?
Do we have questions?
The motion is approval of the recommended personnel actions. If there's no questions, Ms. Greer, can you please, uh, Trustee Goodfriend?
I can't hear. I'm sorry, Mr. Hoda. I can't hear you.
Not at all.
So I don't know what you say.
The motion is on approval of the recommended personnel actions.
Okay, I have some questions.
Trustee Goodfriend.
I printed out in my home the personnel actions. I would like explanations of some letters that are after a person's degrees. One, I would like to know what is JQ or JX?
Those are the required endorsements that are given by the Michigan Department of Education in order to qualify.
Take your mask off so I can hear you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Whenever you see those two letters, they are the code for the endorsements that are required for those positions. So JQ, I think, are you looking at the music? Correct? You're looking at music? You're looking at music?
Yes.
So they, they are required to have those endorsements for that position. Those are the Michigan Department certification endorsements.
Okay. I think it would be nice if we could have a cheat sheet because it's easy for our administration that's involved with this to know it. I, as a board member, a trustee, and I'm not going to speak for anyone but myself, did not know what it is. And if I had that cheat sheet, I could go and check it out as, rather than asking for this action item to be placed on agenda separately.
I will send you the, the, the coding. It's about, it's several pages long, but it's in order of, of the qualifications required, so I'll email that out to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, there's a ZG, Z as in zebra.
Early childhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Let's see, there's an FF. Teaching certificate with an FF.
Give me one second.
Number thirteen.
Oh, that's foreign language, foreign language. And, and that is for Virtual Academy. Now, I don't have them all memorized. I might have to pull up the coding.
That's fine. I'm not asking you to memorize them. I can't memorize them either, but I could have something that I could refer to so I would not have to take the time of the board to go through this. But I think it's terribly important that we know what we, what we're hiring and what their, their qualifications are rather than just a parentheses with two letters. I appreciate you answering them. And I would hope you would be able to provide us with a cheat sheet.
Sure will.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the motion? Seeing no other questions on the motion, the motion is to approve the recommended personnel actions. Ms. Greer, can you please call the role?
Smith?
Yes.
Lonkins? Lonkins?
Trustee Lonkins, you have to unmute yourself.
I just can't stand this. Klein?
Yes.
Hoda?
Yes.
Good friend?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
And Callfriend?
No.
Lonkins?
Yes, Pat.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoda? I'm sorry I wasn't muted, but I had a question. Could you have Mrs. Carol send me a copy of that so that I can have it at home?
Yeah, she's going to email it to the full board.
Okay, and can I also get the letters that were sent to the board that I didn't get that were sent two weeks ago?
All right. I'm sorry, what, what letter are you referring to?
I'll go with, I'll go over that with you later.
That was from Dr. uh, that was from Dr. Neely.
Okay, that, that was emailed to the board, so that's in your email.
Yeah.
I don't know that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hoda.
Yes.
Did you receive that letter? I didn't receive that letter.
I, I believe, I, I'd have to look back at my email.
I think that our emails were changed, and we may not have received it.
Then we didn't get them.
We have.
I went through the, I went through the district email. I did get a response from one of the board members, so I know at least one person got it. Sorry, I'm in the dark right now. But I went through the district email.
This is not, I'm sorry.
I know, I didn't get one.
I, I, I'm going to have to call order in the board meeting for a second. Any communication that, that's distributed by email to our old email addresses is being forwarded to our new email addresses. I know that for some, that for some things, they were being sent to junk mail.
Okay.
So if you might want to check your, your folder there, I'd be happy to pull up my copy and forward that to the rest of the board as well.
Thank you.
I would appreciate it.
We move on to our next action item, which is approval of the June twenty-twenty-one financial statements. Is there a motion to approve the June twenty-twenty-one financial statements?
Move approval.
Support.
Moved by Trustee Elvin, supported by Trustee Lonkins. Do any board members have questions on the June twenty-twenty-one financial statements? Trustee Corprin.
Yes, I had a few questions for the June budget plan, and what I had was, I noticed that the expenditures. I noticed that we have the functions, and then we have the expenditure, the incumbent. But it does not give us the expended or the incumbent because it says and, it doesn't say, say or. So I guess I was looking for it to be itemized so we would know what was spent or paid out, I should say. So I don't know if we could, if we have the Ms. Oscar Linky or someone to tell us what, how to, how, how will we figure that out because it just shows.
So the, the financial statements are not, are, are not the budget. The financial statements are the actual statements for the month of the, the financial status of the district. So what's come in in terms of revenue compared to what was budgeted and what has been expended compared to what was budgeted. Is that, does that answer your question?
No. So if I'm looking at this paper that you're looking at, this expenditure is out of general fund or out of general fund operation income? Well, it's not on there, but it is because this one hasn't, this one's not the one in question. It's, it's the general funds expenditures. You're saying something about a budget? What were you saying?
So if you look at the financial statements, there are four columns for each line item, right? The first column is the budget. That's what was budgeted for that line item. The next column is expended and encumbered, so what was spent in actuality up to the end of the month of June, and the balance that's available to spend, so the budget minus what was spent is what's available to spend. And then there's a fourth column, which is the percentage. So what percentage of what was budgeted has been spent so far? And since June is the final financial statement for the year, for the, for the budget year, you would expect that number, you know, if that number is below a hundred percent, then that means we spent less than was budgeted. If it's above a hundred percent, we spent more than what was budgeted.
I wasn't talking about spending. What I'm asking is spending or expended and incumbent. There are two different words, so I was looking for two different columns. And I don't see that, and you're talking about budget. I wasn't talking about.
So I, Ms. Stalinski or Dr. Hitchcock, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Is expended and encumbered two different words for the same thing?
Dory?
Yes, I can answer that. Can you, can, can everyone hear me? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, very good. What's expended and encumbered? What that means is that we have pledged to, encumbered means we have pledged to expended dollars against this line item. So it would be a purchase order that's out there that would be committed to that financial year. In June, what we have received up until June thirty is the only thing that can be used as an encumbrance. And so what you see is probably as close to a true accounting of what our actual expenditures will be. Throughout the year, though, it would be what we've actually paid a check for and what we have a purchase order for, a pledge to pay for our vendors. And that would be in your total of expended and encumbered.
So you're saying they're combined?
Correct.
Okay, so is there a way for us to see that them separate? Where it's expended or excuse me, yeah, expended and encumbered so we can see what was added together? Because it's just showing us one number.
We can change the financial statement if that's a board's a wish so that I show what is actual expenditures and what is pledged as encumbrances in the financial statement against that. In June, pretty much it's just what you see there is our actual. Unless there's something throughout the audit that will show us that I did not catch to be placed as an actual expenditure because the June statement, this is a temporary statement, and your actual audit will be your final June statement.
Okay, so it can be in the final then?
Okay, thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the June twenty-twenty-one financial statements. Are there any other questions from the board on the motion? I'm sorry?
I got one more question.
Go ahead.
Is the June, is, she said, these are not actual, they're just, I'm sorry, I'm Ms. R. Stalinski. You said that they, they weren't actual. These are just.
No, they are actual. Once they're audited, then they'll be final. So the audit. So the audit goes through.
Is this the June from when we were supposed to have a public meeting, the one in June?
So this is June 2021's financial statements?
Last year. I mean, this year.
Yes, this past.
But what I'm asking is, was we, were we supposed to have a public meeting on this one or is it late?
We, we are having a public meeting on, on this right now.
We're having a public meeting when?
So all of our financial statements come to us monthly to be approved. They're typically in the, in the consent agenda each month.
Okay.
I think what Ms. Corprin is asking is, why do we now have two in, at one meeting as opposed to, we should have had June last month?
Is that your question, trustee Corprin? Or are you asking about a public hearing on the budget?
Yeah, because I thought that's what we were supposed to have in June, because it says here at the bottom that it goes from June, well, I guess June 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, right?
No, so the annual budget is passed at the end of June for the July 1 to June 30th. We did have a public hearing on that in June. This is the financial statement. So each month, the, we get a report of how much has actually come in in revenue, how much has gone out in expenditures or been pledged in, in purchase orders? And how that compares to the budget? And then at the, what you see at the bottom is the, is the projected fund equity for the end of the year.
Project, understood.
Okay.
That, that being the case, I would like to know, why is it that we have two financial statements at once? As opposed to having seen June previously?
That was shared in a board update when we discovered that that took place. It was an error that was expressed on behalf of the staff members that upload the information into board books.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My job, bye.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the June 2021 financial statements. Any other questions from the board? Ms. Greer, can you please call the roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Lundkins? Lundkins?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Hoda?
Yes.
Good friend?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
And Colbrun?
Yes.
Okay, and the next action item is approval of the July 2021 financial statements. Is there a motion to approve the July 2021 financial statements?
Make a motion, make a motion to approve it.
Okay, motion by trustee Elvins, supported by trustee Lundkins. Do any board members have questions on the July 2021 financial statements? Trustee Klein?
Yeah, I looked at these, that's financial statement, and we have a projected revenue of 62.7 million. I understand that that's based on the current enrollment. That doesn't indicate the, the missing funds and seats, as we refer to them. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct, and you will, based off of, once we get our finalized October counts, then we will be coming to the board for a budget adjustment that amends that.
But even if, even as it stands, based on this 4,000 enrollment, which is not a true figure, we still have a budget shortfall of $6 million, approximately a 9% shortfall. How is that feasible long-term?
I do, I do believe that that has been outlaid to the board on a few occasions. We will be using some of our S R dollars in order to offset some of these revenues. We do have a fund balance that will cushion this, but of course, we will have to position ourselves so that we do not fall below the 5%. So that we don't have to go into a deficit elimination planning stage with the board, with the district and the Board of Education and State of Michigan.
That makes sense, but for the moment, we have money in the bank, but we're draining that. Is that right? I mean, it's.
That is correct.
Okay. I guess I had the same question with respect to the food budget. We also have a 20% shortfall in the food budget. Is there some plan to turn that around long-term?
At, at this point in time, we have, we're looking at the student enrollment and, and hopes that we're going to regain the student. Until we get that finalized count, we will not be able to position ourselves for future. Once we have that, then of course, the administration will be positioning our, the district and our board in order to make sure that we have sufficient fund balance and sufficient revenues versus expenditures.
Procedurally speaking, would I need to make a motion to ask that the next financial statement show at least as a projection also, the projected revenues based on actual confirmed bonds and seats? So we have a better idea. And the reason I'm, I'm bringing this up is because there's been a lot of talk about money in the district. And it seems from our fund statements that we're not in such an unbelievably rosy situation as has been presented in some of the earlier comments today. And I would like to see from the accounting what things look like if we actually only wind up with an enrollment, an actual enrollment, a bonds and seats enrollment of 3,100 students? And just how much we're digging into our savings as it is? So do I need to make a motion for that?
So i- if the board would like to have a report on projected, on how the projected enrollment could affect the budget? I think we can do that separate from the financial statements, but I think the financial statements themselves are regulated in terms of what they, what they state in terms of the current financial position of the district. So I'm not sure that would be appropriate for the financial statements. I, I also want to caution the board to be mindful that there, there's a lot of, when we talk about projecting revenue, there's a lot of moving parts. So the number of enrolled students is certainly one piece. How the legislature deals with that is another piece. There's currently legislation in front of the legislature that's being considered that would hold districts harmless for drops in enrollment this year. Or that would, that would cushion that. So, you know, there's, I, I think we, we always should budget for the kind of looking out and not count on things that we're not, that we don't have in front of us, but we also don't want to paint a picture that may not be accurate once all the moving parts settle in. And that's, you know, I think that's important to be mindful of.
I would like to make a motion to request a, a projected budget based on the bonds and seats that we have confirmed by the.
Trustee Elvin has a point of order.
My boarder is already motion on floor.
I'm sorry.
There's a motion on the floor.
That's fair.
So the motion on the floor is approval of the July 2021 financial statements. Are there, are there questions? Any more questions from the board on that?
Yes.
Trustee Corprin.
Our fund balance, isn't it, how, how much is in our fund balance? Because I, I thought that, I mean, that's a question, but I thought that even though we have a decline in enrollment, that we still have, you know, we still have funds, so.
Right, so the, the current, so on the, if you look at page two of the financial statements, all the way at the bottom, you'll see the projected fund equity for, for June 30, 2021. And then below that is the projected fund equity for June 30, 2022. So based on what we're looking at, that's, that's where our fund equity was at the end of June, pending the audit. And then if revenues and expenditures stay where they are right now, the, below that is the projected fund equity for June 30, 2022. I would remind you though, that is the number with a enrollment of 3,900 students. So if the enrollment is an additional $7 million less, then you would take $7 million off of that number, and that's where our enrollment, that's where our fund equity would be at the end of this coming year.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. So it'd be on next month's projected va- budget, I mean, projection?
So if we.
Saying that we now know that we are less?
So we don't yet know that we are less, because there's still, there's still time for students to come to class. Right? So count day is, is in October. So until count day happens in October, we don't have our final enrollment numbers. And that's what Ms. Astralinki said earlier, that once we have those final enrollment numbers, there will be a budget adjustment for board approval. If that, if the board approves that, then that number will reflect what the board has adjusted its budget to look at.
Right, in October, we still really don't know if those funds are going to be released either, right?
That's entirely up to the legislature and, and the governor. So I certainly hope so.
Understood.
Again, the motion is for approval of the July 2021 financial statements. Do any board members have any questions on the motion? Ms. Greer, can you please call the roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Lundkins?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Good friend?
Yes.
Hoda?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
And Colbrun?
Yes.
Okay, our next action item is approval of ATS Educational Services contract. Mr. Smith, can you read that one, please?
Yes. Approve Oak Park School District ATS Educational Consulting Services Incorporated. Vendor agreement for alternative and virtual education programs. Resolve that the Oak Park Board of Education approve the renewal contract agreement with ATS Educational Consulting Services vendor for the alternative and virtual education programs for, for the fiscal years 2021 to 2022, 2022 to 2023, 2023 to 24, 24, and 2024 to 2025, and 2025 to 26, as presented at the August 23rd, 21, 2021 board meeting and incorporated in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Moved by trustee Smith, supported by trustee Klein. The motion is to approve the ATS contract. Are there any questions on that? Ms. Greer, can you please call the roll?
Colbrun?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Good friend?
Yes.
Hoda?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Lundkins?
Yes.
Man?
Yes.
Next is authorization for board members attendance at the MSB Annual Leadership Conference. Trustee Klein, can you read that, please?
We resolve that the Oak Park Board of Education authorizes members Dawn Corprin and Alvin Smith attendance and related costs for the Michigan Association of School Boards Annual Leadership Conference, November 11th to 14th, 2021 at Amway Grand Hotel and the DeVos Place, Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Support.
Moved by trustee Klein, supported by trustee Lundkins. Trustee Elvin?
Would like to offer an amendment to the motion to correctly note trustee Smith's first name.
Albert?
Yeah.
It says Alvin, I just read it off the sheet, I'm sorry. Should we read it?
All right, there's a, there's an amendment to the motion
support.
To, and I, I would actually, with your permission, trustee Alvin, I would propose an alternative amendment to the motion, which would be to remove board member names from the motion, so that any board member that wishes to attend, that contacts Ms. Greer can, can attend.
If I may.
Does that?
He's the maker of the motion, though.
I withdraw the motion, and I understand the suggestion, remember, is to allow any board member up to everybody. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I will.
So would you, so would you agree to that alternative amendment?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm gonna put up a new motion.
Okay. So the motion is to approve board members' attendance at the MSB Annual Leadership Conference, which is November 11th to 14th at the Amway Grand Hotel in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And of course, board members will be reimbursed for conference registration as well as transportation and
expenditures.
And expenditures at the conference. And I, I do plan on attending at least one day of the conference, probably virtually. I'm presenting at the conference as well, so we're still working out the details of that of, because presenters are given a, a single day of attendance, but I have two other co-presenters and we're still figuring out how to split that up. But I will communicate to trustee, to Ms. Greer when I have that sorted out. Any, so the, so any questions on the motion? All right, so the motion is to approve board member attendance at the MSB Conference and associated expenditures. Ms. Greer, can you please call the roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Corprin?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Lundkins?
Yes.
Good friend?
Yes.
And Hoda?
Yes. Next item is 6C, trustee Corprin. Can you read that one, please?
Actually, we, yeah, it would be A, B, C, D, E, F. This would be F.
You said.
But it's a resolution for, to appoint the director and alternate director for MAISL.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. Resolve that the Oak Park Board of Education appoint Kristin Jones as director and Pat Greer as alternate, alternate director to the MAISL Joint Risk Management Trust.
Support.
Moved by trustee Corprin, supported by trustee Goodfriend. Are there any questions on the motion?
What does MAISL stand for?
I believe this is our unemployment insurance, is that right? So Christine Jones is our newly approved CFOO.
It's the Metropolitan Association for Improved School Legislation.
Yes.
Okay.
So next.
All right. So the motion is approval of, is to appoint Christine Jones as director and Pat Greer as alternate director to MAISL Joint Risk Management Trust. Any other questions from the board?
If you have a second?
Yes.
Yes, it was moved by trustee Corprin, supported by trustee Goodfriend. Ms. Greer, can you please call the roll?
Hoda?
Yes.
Good friend?
Yes.
Lundkins?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Colbrun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And then there was a motion by trustee Goodfriend, asked to be added to the agenda. A motion to add a monthly agenda item for updates from the construction company?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Goodfriend, supported by trustee Corprin. Do any board members have questions on the motion?
Can we have some clarification as to what it means, an update by construction companies? That's pretty broad. Just want to clarify the motion, what we're going to be requiring and from who we're going to be requiring it from and so on.
Go ahead, trustee Goodfriend. Trustee Goodfriend, did you want to answer that?
We hired these people to be the, the knowledgeable to follow this process.
Having a plant, 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 presso?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will entail the construction company, whatever construction company that will be doing the job. We pay for that. It's not free. We've already paid. There is a fee. And it, and this, I have been on two other issues with bonds in the 80s and in 2009. And when things are happening, when construction is being done, there is a monthly report. Mr. Hoda, you know, you were there when the architects, as well as Granger, the architects was Shaw and the Granger was the construction company. And they came and they told us what was happening and brought us up to date monthly, as well as if there were changes that had to be made, what had to be done. That's, that's a part of their job and that's a part of the fee that we put them in the position to, as professionals, to bring to this board. So we are. to, as professionals to bring to this board. So we are always up to date on it. This is not unusual. This is, this happens all the time and we're not different than any other district. This is the way it's done and we pay for this.
I understand. I'm just trying to figure out what exactly it is that we're going to be moving and requiring somebody to do and who it is.
Them to.
But who is, but who is them? Them is Plant Maran Cressa?
It would be the.
And whatever construction company that will be involved with the project.
Trustee Good Friend, can I just clarify something? Are, are you referring to updates on the bond projects or the Lessinger project?
Well, the Lessinger project is certainly one of them.
Cause Lessinger is not part of the bond.
I know it's not a bond, but it's money that we're expending and we have to know what's going on. I was pretty shocked what I saw when we were there about a month ago. And, um, and then maybe we have to make some adjustments because we have some other issues that have been brought to us, uh, this evening. And I think all board members should, uh, look at this very carefully in regards to, uh, rooms that windows don't open, that was supposed to be taken care of. Uh, rooms that are so hot or air conditioners that are not working. All of these things we've paid for and, uh, DM Burr is our maintenance company and where are they? And if the, if the halls are crowded, where is the administration within the buildings as the youngsters in Oak Park High School are, are passing through? The lunchrooms are dirty. Why aren't they clean?
So I, I want to keep us focused here. The motion is about the construction project. It was about the construction project. So are there, are there other questions about the motion to ask for a monthly update from Plant Moran Cressa on construction projects?
I want that from them on our bond.
Are, are there other questions on that motion?
So, so the motion is that Plant Moran Cressa should give us a monthly update. Is that the motion?
Okay, I just, I just wanted to know what the motion was.
Thank you.
And it would be a monthly in-person update. So they're already providing us written updates.
But they should have somebody come to our board meetings.
Person.
Right.
If the.
In person at the board meeting.
Question, they're able to.
Right.
Be able to ask it at that time.
So the, the motion is to have a monthly update at the board meeting from Plant Moran Cressa. Are there any questions from the board on the motion?
I'll support the motion.
Okay, Ms. Greer, can you please call the roll?
Corbin.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Good friend.
Yes.
Hoda.
No.
Klein.
Yes.
Lunkins.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Okay, motion passes. Trustee Klein, did you also want to offer another motion?
Yeah, um, I would like that, yeah. At least for the next motion because we'll have the buns and seats numbers by October, right? That's when it will be set.
October sixth is count day, but the count isn't official until well after that.
I didn't catch last, what did you say?
We have count day on October sixth, but the count isn't official until after that. We have to try to, uh, any student that does not appear on count day, we have to try to track them down. They have to be in, in the school so many days and hours to be officially counted. So it'll be sometime after that before we have an official number.
I, I guess the motion is that, uh, whenever we are presented with a, um, the accounting, we should also be presented with a, um, I guess a, a budget projection based on the buns and seats that are confirmed to a reasonable degree of certainty at that time.
So a, as, as Ms. Astralinki mentioned before, there will be a budget adjustment brought to the board once those numbers are finalized. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
So is, did you still want to pass a motion or, or did you?
Well, I'd like to see it now. I mean, obviously I can't see it tonight, but at the next, the next board meeting, whenever the next time it is that we're going to see an account statement that is going to show our budget based on our projection of, based on enrollment, we should also, not necessarily as in, uh, as a revision to that document, but as a separate document, let's see on the side, what does our budget look like based on our confirmed buns and seats enrollment?
I can send you a projection, uh, that was done on September ninth. I'll send it via email to the board.
I think that'd be great. Uh, and it's, can we do that on a monthly basis?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. So is there a motion on the floor?
I mean, I trust Dr. Gershka. I don't need a motion. I'm happy.
Okay, so.
I'm going to withdraw my motion. Somebody else is welcome to bring it, but.
Okay. Um, are, so we move on to information items. Are there any information items, any? Uh, we don't have anything on the agenda, anything that anyone wants to mention about information items? So items that, these would be items that would come for action in the future to the board. Trustee Corbin.
I just might not need to support. It's just information.
Okay, um, trustee Good Friend?
Yes, I think, um, doctor, well, I do believe we've heard much this evening that is, um, awful when we're trying to fight COVID nineteen and the viruses that are associated with the, that our buildings are dirty. Our windows can't be opened for air. It's hot in there. There are air conditioners that aren't working. I mean, I just don't understand this. If they put in their work orders, which was done and it's not been taken care of, electricity that's not working, running, running, uh, extension cords in classrooms trying to get this done. This has to be taken care of. We have a company that's supposed to be doing these things and taking care of it when the, if the orders are written, when there's a complaint of, of something being broken and not working and we listen to it tonight. The lunchroom is, are filthy.
Sure.
When I went into the restroom this evening, they were not checked before we came because it was awful.
I updated the board on Friday with a contributing factor for why this might be the case, but I will send some additional communications to the board and follow up with the appropriate staff tomorrow morning.
Sometimes I think it's easier.
I've got a question.
Where, where?
Excuse me.
We, we're in information items.
I think it's easier at times to be able to sit down as human beings and talking it out rather than a written communication. It's a one-way street that way.
Okay. I'm sorry, trustee Corbin?
No, I was saying, I can't hear you guys if you're talking. Oh.
Okay.
I have a question. I mean, a statement or something. I'm sorry, I forgot. Um, it was actually, I just pulled it up. Um, I just wanted, it's about the, uh, the website. On the homepage, it states on September the thirteenth, twenty twenty one, Board of Education Meeting is from seven PM to nine PM. If we can please remove that nine PM because I don't think the chair or the president, Hoda, saw that.
On the website for what day?
Today.
It says today, thir- uh, the thirteenth, September twenty twenty one, Board of Education Meeting, seven till nine, and we are way past that.
Until then, so.
So if you could.
Yeah, we, we don't set end times for our board meetings because we take the time to get the business done and listen to the public as well. Um, but Zoom meetings do require, as you schedule them, to ha- to have that, to have that there. So.
I don't know where she's looking. She's on a different page, though.
Are, are, are you looking at the, the Oak Park Public Schools website? Because I don't see that here. I just see dates.
Calendar.
Here it is, right here. Oak Park Schools. And it says it right here.
It does.
Right here. It says it right here.
So on the, on the website, on the left side.
Other question I had for Madam Superintendent, since we were talking about the website, um, now that the personnel action has been approved, if we can please update according to the Michigan law, the transparency report under, uh, number four, that talks about, uh, salaries over a hundred thousand dollars.
You're talking about for the personnel actions that just happened tonight?
I can't hear.
Are you referring to the personnel actions that just happened tonight?
Yes, I was saying that since it was update, since it passed.
Oh, yes, those will be updated.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other information items? Okay, we move on to communications and addenda, and we'll start with communications and addenda from members of the public. So if there's any members of the public that would like to communicate with the board at this time, you can raise your hand, step up to the microphone here or comment in the chat that you'd like to speak. Seeing none, are there communications or addenda from members of the board? Uh, trustee Alvin and then trustee Klein.
Yeah, yes, uh, so, um, I know we have, it's a waiting game for us to learn about where we are financially and, and where we are with our youngsters in the classroom. So that's, that's fair. If there's any help needed in trying to contact families, I offer to make phone calls or whatever we need to do to try to assist, uh, to see where our youngsters are who are not in the classroom. Uh, and so please don't hesitate to reach out to me or give me a list and I'll get to work on it if, if, if that's how you're doing it. If there's some other way, please let me know so that, you know, it doesn't all have to fall on the teachers. I can assist with that. Um, the other thing is from, I know we're looking at making some upgrades to the schools based on the bond. But if there's a way we can expedite getting electricity where, where it needs to be so teachers can, you know, do what they need to do. Um, if there's a, an issue we're having with, with, with stuff getting done from a work order perspective, there's some, 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 some other way we can get that done. Uh, would like to see that happen if, if we can, I don't, I don't want to have any, any reasons for, for teachers to have to go down the hall, the plug-in stuff that they should be able to have and there, no, like, running electricity in their classroom. If there's a way to do that, uh, let's, let's try to see if we can manage through that.
Absolutely. I just became aware of the electricity issue tonight. But we can certainly contract the electricity out to a electrician. The DM Burr electrician was on vacation, so my assumption is that could be the issue. However, we're happy to contract it out and it'll come as a fee, but we will contract it.
The, the, the other thing is from, you know, listening to some of the students here tonight too, they're, they have their own concerns about passing classes, um, where there's an abundance of students in the same location. If we can explore, I, I don't know if this is the first you're hearing of it or not, so, but if there's, if there's an opportunity to explore how we can better manage that so that it's a little, they feel safer, then we'd, we'd love to, to hear what we can do to help and assist with that.
Absolutely. Um, I brought those concerns to the attention of the Oak Park High School principal uh, yesterday or Friday, excuse me, and today. So I'm looking forward to a meeting with her on Wednesday to hear a plan for it to be rectified.
Thanks.
Trustee Klein?
I, I don't have some sort of eloquent or prepared remarks or anything, but I, I do feel incumbent to note that, um, we are at September thirteen, which is two days removed from September eleven, uh, twenty years ago. Everybody remembers where they were when this happened. Obviously up here, I'm, I think I'm the youngest one, person on this podium and you and I remember exactly where I was and what I was going through. Actually, I honestly, I thought I was being hoaxed by some friends in high school uh, because I just couldn't believe what was going on. And I think it's incumbent upon us, especially, um, these meetings can get a little stressful and we can get caught up in, in little trivialities. And if nothing else, it's incumbent on us to remember at, at least once a year that, uh, we are unbelievably blessed to live in the country that we live in, to be surrounded by the people that we're surrounded with, to have arguments with people who are so unbelievably at their core civil and committed to the same ideals that we are all committed to here. And, you know, we should just keep this in mind and go forward and march forward and, uh, have an amazing future.
Okay, um, anything else from members of the board? I, I want to take this opportunity to welcome our new, uh, CFOO, Ms. Jones. Um, looking forward to working together and thank you for joining us and for your commitment and staying through a rather long meeting. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank our administrative team for, um, managing so many, um, moving pieces. Um, I was especially encouraged to see when I was going over the personnel actions reports and looking at what the minimum qualifications were for some of the positions and seeing that so many of our candidates are qualified beyond those minimal qualifications. So we're seeing that even with all of the headwinds, that there are some wonderful people coming into the district and that's very encouraging. And also, um, with this year being such a challenge in terms of bringing students back and, and under, after being out of the buildings in many cases for a year and a half, coming back under new expectations. Much for, um, all of your leadership on those matters. And are there any communications or addenda from members of the administration? Okay, then.
Can I, can I make one more remark? There's, there've been a lot of notes about electrical issues or air conditioning issues or whatever they are and our administration is extraordinarily communicative. Um, and board meetings are not the only place for people to communicate concerns. Uh, teachers should know how to get in touch with the administration. I'm sure that they do. If they don't, they can speak to their principals and get in touch with the administration that way. Um, it's, it's a problem. These things happen in the first place. They can be solved with proper communication and I want to encourage everybody to communicate with the administration outside of where literally the administration cannot respond based on the way the, this works. People complain about that this is one-way communication. But this is not the only time. This is not the only opportunity to communicate with the administration. There's plenty of other opportunity, literally any other day and any other time to have two-way communication with the administration. And that's the time to get these things done that there can actually be, uh, work accomplished.
Okay, trustee Corbin?
Yeah, um, thanks for calling on me. Uh, seeing that the board members have addressed some of the concerns tonight, I didn't think that we could, but seeing that I've been hearing that to piggyback on, um, what Mr. Trustee Klein said regarding to, um, the issues that, um, was brought to our attention tonight, I thought that there were, um, in the past, I thought I heard them say that they put in a ticket, you know, on these, um, issues that are in their class, um, to get them addressed. Um, but I do want to just say that, um, this was a very sad night for me to hear uh, the concerns that have been brought to this board. And I beg we, I, I beg that, um, that things will get better in this district because tonight is just not a good night, uh, for this board to be addressed with all of these issues, one by one by one. Um, and I just say that I'm, I'm deeply, deeply, uh, bothered by what I heard and saw tonight. And that's it.
Okay, um, trustee Lunkins.
Now, I just want to piggyback on what, um, board member Corbin said. I, as long as I've been on this board, I have never had that many people complain about so many different things that's going on. Not just in one school, in all of our schools. All of our schools need to be checked. The bathrooms, if you've got board members going in, certain math, all of them need to be checked, not just the high school. And we can't just go by the words that a custodian says unless we follow up on it to see if it's being done. Okay, I'm thrilled. Okay, I'm thrilled.
Okay, is there, um, I'll ask for unanimous consent to adjourn?
Oh, well. I'm going to adjourn and our next meeting will be October fourth.
Thank you, trustee Lunkins. And if there's no objection, we will adjourn this meeting at ten twelve.